It wasn't.
Hi.
Sorry.
We should be, I'm contacting CMN just to verify that they're good to queue. You guys are good to go? Okay. All right, we are ready to begin. Go ahead.
All righty.
Calling to order the Tuesday, May 12th, 2020, City of Berkeley Budget Work Session. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Here.
Mayor Protam Dean.
Here, sorry.
Councilmember Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Henan. Councilmember Price.
Here.
Mayor Turbrack.
Here. Next order of business is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Mayor Protam Dean. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on tonight's agenda?
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. At this time, we will stand for the pledge. Tori, are you going to get the flag up? Okay? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, for which we stand one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have reached the public comments portion of our agenda. If you would like to call in and comment, please call 1-312-626-6799. If you are not already here, again, the number is 312-626-6799. And when you're recognized, please state your name and city of residence. What's that? See anybody?
None at this times.
Okay. Seeing nobody here to publicly comment, we will close public comments and we will move on to our order of business this evening. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number one?
PowerPoint presentation, matter of receiving a PowerPoint presentation.
All right, Mark, I believe this is your item here. And again, before we start, just to preface our conversation general for the next two days, we understand clearly that the uncertainty in the situation that we are dealing with right now is very different than anything we've experienced in the past, even going back to 2008, 2009. At that point, we knew we could point to some underlying causes. They were able to be remedied and there's still a long time that it takes to recover from something like that. But in this case, we don't have a lot of those answers. We don't know when things are going to return back to normal. What I can tell you is it will have a significant impact on our budget. And you will all see that this evening, you've already seen the budget. But this is a very scaled down budget. We are looking at needs, we are not looking at wants. City manager and I were on a phone call earlier today with Senator Miller in McMorro and a number of other mayors and managers in the area. And one thing is clear, the state will be cutting shared revenue and we don't know how significant that's going to be, but it is going to be significant. And it's going to impact us now and it's going to impact us recovering in the future. We also had conversations about Headley and Proposal A and the limitations that that puts on us, whereas we were just starting to get close to where we were at pre-2008 levels. Now it's going to take a significant amount of time just to try to get back if something in the legislature doesn't change. City manager has been talking with her and her administration a number of times and we were, at least the state was looking to move in that direction in actually March of this year, but unfortunately due to COVID-19, those discussions were also shelved. So what we are looking at today and tomorrow are the necessary items that we need to keep the city running, keep providing as many services as we possibly can, as we safely can, to our residents while keeping an eye on the future and erring on the side of being cautious and conservative where needed until we have a much better understanding of what we are looking at moving forward. So I apologize, Mark, for cutting you off there just for a minute, but just to kick off the conversation today, I'm sure you're going to touch on a number of those topics in your presentation. And without any further ado, I will hand the microphone over virtually to you.
All right, and do not apologize, it was an excellent summary of where we're at, which is, nobody knows, but it's definitely reflected in the budget. Extremely difficult process. Again, I will commend everyone involved with the budget and that's everyone here. Lori puts the thing together. It was definitely challenging to put everything together and then make changes. And then, as we know, I mean, we count on all of you to find some of the discrepancies and the typos and those will all get fixed before the final budget. There's always one little thing that sneaks through that'll end up in the final budget, but hopefully it won't be anything of substance. It might just be a typo that none of us caught. But Tori, I believe is going to try and put this up for you to review. I cut, I think last year, my first year budget with Berkeley, I cut about 30 slides and this year I probably cut another 25 or so. Again, this is nothing that's ever too exciting, to be honest with you, for a budget process, but it's just kind of a summary for all of you to see maybe some of our philosophies, some of our thoughts that went into the budget itself. But it summarizes more or less some of the things we thought about as we went through the budget. So go ahead, Tori.
Sorry, let me move on.
You're okay, you're okay.
There you go.
Okay, this is the general fund overview is generally where I start. Our assumptions were we had a taxable value increase of just over 5% comparable to last year. The comparative millage rate decrease was 1.64%. And that's due to our Headley rollback. The 2018 millage levy for capital improvement roads projects was rolled back once again this year for Headley reasons to 1.9239. Our total millage levy dropped from last year, it'll be 16.5476. We put in a estimated state shared revenue decrease of 20%. I know some of you expressed that it could be much bleaker than this. That's the number they're giving us to start. It's all going to come down to when things reopen and how quickly people get back into their routine. I agree, Dennis had pointed out that's pretty optimistic, only 20%. And I don't disagree with him, but it's the numbers they're telling us to start with. So we did put that into the budget numbers. We had a 2% salary increase for the majority of the employees, including our PSO personnel. Our healthcare was actually a good news this year and this is kind of an overall. Because we're self-insured, partially self-insured, we had a decrease in healthcare costs overall. But we're anticipating to be conservative about a 1.5% increase all the way through on our healthcare costs. 5.8% increase in our MERS pension contributions. As you all know, those will continue to arise until we get to the level of funding that makes GAZB happy. 8.9% increase in our public safety pension contributions. Still well-funded, I mean, in around the 73 or 4%. We had, of course, a great finishing quarter last year in public safety pension, but we did not have such a good first quarter and I anticipate the second quarter will help us bounce back some. We also had a decrease in our CIP requests of 104,600 from the previous year and our equipment purchase as well and repair from 2019, 2020, down 394,534.
Apologies on the delay, here we go.
Proposal A limits, this is just kind of the general proposal A speech that limits the growth in taxable value to lesser of 5% of the rate of inflation, whichever is lower. I think it's been in place since 94 and we've never had a rate of inflation near 5%. It's been generally somewhere in that, you know, 1.5 to 2.5 range for the most part. We did an averaging out since 95, it's been 2.1% on average. Taxable value began to recover from the housing crisis and inflation's averaged about 1.6%. Since 2013, our taxable value has increased at average of 4.4%, so it's outpaced inflation. And that gap of 2.8% between the two is what makes it difficult for us on an annual basis to really recover, as the mayor mentioned. But, you know, we have to roll it back and we have to, you know, we have to abide by the rules, which is Proposal A and Headley both keep us rolled back to a level that keeps us pretty close to the rate of inflation. Go ahead, Tori. This is just a snapshot from back from 2011. You can kind of see, we pointed out last year and it's pretty much the same case. Our overall city millage levy is still below the level it was back in 2016. We dropped off a little, but we did have that capital improvement millage, which puts us back around 16.5 mills. But Berkeley's remained pretty consistent with levies and been fortunate enough to not have a whole lot of debt.
Mark, you want to call attention over here to the debt millage?
Yeah, the debt millage is all the way down to 4.45 this year. It will be off next year. The last year of payment is in the 2021 budget year and the following year, there will be no more payments for that 11-mile road project. So that 0.45 next year will be zero. And this runs back 10 years of property taxes, the taxable values. You can kind of see there, you know, we're still recovering, 11 and 12 were drops. And then since then, we've had a fairly consistent rise in property values again. And again, the impact of COVID-19, we won't know. I know when we spoke with Natalie yesterday, Matt and I, I feel like we'll have some impact next year, but the good news is we have that gap right now. If you look at your, if you've lived in Berkeley for a number of years, you have that gap again between your taxable value and your assessed value. And you kind of, you close that gap, even if values drop, you'll have a closing of that gap. But, you know, I don't know next year that there'll be a huge impact. A lot's going to come back again to see how, whether homes that go up for sale, whether they're still carrying, you know, close to that market value. And then again, this is just a breakdown in how much revenue it generates of the millage that we're asking council to levy for this year. That community promotions required, I found that out last year after levying the full rate. I found out that we have to, it has to be under 50,000 to meet the requirement. So, but all of the others, the capital improvement for roads, those are all max levies. The public safety, we have, we're allowed to levy as much as we need and we always offset the healthcare costs as well for the retirees in the public safety. That's that Act 345 mill inch, we're bumping that up slightly to 2.5% and that also funds the pension. And state shared revenue history, this gets talked about especially by managers and finance directors at Lansing every year. How, you know, over the years, they've basically taken away that funding, the statutory portion. They've taken chunks of it over the years. We now have to submit information. That happened under Governor Snyder and we submit the CVTRS dashboard and things of that nature. But you can see in the 1920 and 2021, the COVID-19 impact is dropping both payments in our estimates and the 2021 number does reflect that 20% reduction. And again, just a kind of over the years snapshot again of the state shared revenue. We were, you can see, we were just under 2 million in Berkeley back in 99, 2000. And the hits just keep on coming because that, again, they've done cumulative impact of this over the years and they were, as was mentioned, there was inroads being made to changing the funding. But with COVID-19 now, that's all going to be put on the back burner. So I think, again, we can probably expect things to stay where they were for a number of years going forward. Just a few highlights from other revenue. Again, I had mentioned in here the impact COVID-19 is not going to be fully known until we return to, again, I say normal, but the new normal, whatever that ends up being. Our building department obviously was hit hard. Permit revenues, people not being able to come in and pull permits is normal. And I'm sure Aaron could attest there, as soon as we're able to, that will ramp up again because there are a lot of people that are doing things to their home. Certainly during this time, a lot of people have wanted to do things in their home and you'll start seeing some construction ramp up again. But, you know, it's been fairly consistent in Berkeley. You've got a lot of interest in people moving into the community. And, you know, we'll have a better idea of where these are going to end up as we get further into the fiscal year, but it was pretty much on hold for a couple of months. Our contributions, donations miscellaneous and investment earnings, relatively the same going forward. And then the police, the public safety department is beginning a new K-9 program and we expect to have initial program donations up to about 100,000 with the cost to offset that, to purchase a vehicle and things, which I know the chief will address when he gets to his turn. And again, six-year trend of revenues. You can see we're consistently rising, you know, a little bit of a dip this year because of the late fiscal year hit, but we still anticipate a pretty decent amount of revenue. Again, that's dependent on that state shared revenue being close to a 20% drop. But, you know, we feel, we feel pretty good about that number right now. You might want to ask us again in three months. And then this is our expenditures, kind of by type, you know, when we're in line. Matt and I spoke about this this week, that we're, you know, we're fairly consistent. You know, when we look at our percentage of fund balance, we fluctuated in the, you know, somewhere between 11 and 13.5 million. We bought a million-dollar fire truck, which it's on the books right now. We still have to expense that, basically, it's sitting in prepaid until it's delivered. But 12.5 million in expenditures is kind of in the middle for where we would expect to be right now and that is with quite a few capital cuts. And once again, our salaries and fringes, it's a large increase. Most of that's really due to, and the chief again will address this, the addition of dispatch services. And we did, we'll have a bump in our MERS pension and public safety pension again as we move forward. But good news was the healthcare piece and we feel like, again, with experience, moving to that self-funded program is helping tremendously in the first couple of years of experience. Let's just hope it stays that way. We're fortunate, we have healthy employees and we have very healthy retirees, which is unusual, but it's good news. And then again, just to mention, I kind of broke out some of those expected increases between the MERS pension and the PSO pension. And the council has committed to, and again, we have questions. It's always, now that we have the plan in place for OPEB, we're going to continue to pre-fund the trust. And, you know, that kind of works along with the healthcare, whatever's available from that 1.2 million we'll put in. But the expectation for MERS is that we'll be 100% funded in about 20 years, which I know sounds like a lot, but that's, that's better than a lot of communities that are in MERS situations. But that's kind of what the state's trying to do consistently is get everyone to 100% funded within 30 years for sure. And in our case, we'll be there in about 20 at the current funding levels. And then the PSO pension, we expect in about 15 years, we'll be at 100%. And then capital outlay again this year, we pushed quite a bit back when we went through with anticipation that we're not going to have the same revenue levels, but 119,000 CIP for 2021 wayfinding museum roof and the library furniture were three items we thought we needed to move forward with. So we put those in and then the CERP was, again, we pushed some things into the future, looked to be fiscally responsible as much as possible. Those are the items there that we expect this year to spend money on. And then our transfers out fluctuates generally, it's, we transfer money to the Parks and Rec revolving fund. We scaled that back slightly this year, but we didn't want to scale it back too much because it does help fund the Parks and Rec operations. You know, as you all know, the big hits, the summer camp and things of that nature that generate so much revenue and the Parks and Rec fund, you know, aren't going to happen this year and we'll certainly hope for next year. We do collect, that kind of overlaps fiscal years, we collect a lot of that money toward the end of our fiscal year. We'd be getting a lot of it now in May in preparation for it in June. So our hope right now is that we'll be back to normal next year. We'll be able to have our normal functions, but we expect to transfer 300,000 and then the 24/9 is that our leave buyouts that we have on an annual basis contractually. And then this is just a trend of expenditures. Again, you can kind of see, we, back in 15, 16, we were just under 10 million and, you know, that was very little capital, I'm sure. But since we've ramped up trying to catch up some of our capital spending, we've reached the 13 million and we're anticipating about 12.5 million this coming year. And then our fund balance, of course, which is always of concern. And you can kind of see our projection, 2021 is going to be close to the level we were at in 15, 16. Still in pretty good shape. I think the next slide shows the percentage of expenditures. Yeah, you can see, we're going to maintain about 34% of a little bit higher level of expenditure, but that's certainly, we also talked about that, 15% by policy, but generally 20, 25% is good. And then if you can maintain somewhere in the 30, the 35%, you know, they consider that really good. So we're going to be trying to focus on keeping that fund balance level somewhere in that 25 to 35 range. And then as Lori had mentioned, the major streets, we got late numbers through the state. Michigan Transportation Fund dropped, I think I figured it around 13, did I put that in here? 13.8% was the anticipated drop. And again, nobody's driving, so nobody's buying gas and that's where we get our revenues for the Michigan Transportation Fund from Act 51. So we dropped that to 1,420, based on their new estimates. And that will drop, what we had sent you originally, that will drop our bottom line. Good news in major streets is we'll still end up with a surplus even with our expenditures. We did move a couple of full-time employees from our DPW. I think we were under utilizing our expenditures in major streets as far as employees go. So we're certainly within our ability to add a couple of people to our major street, which we did. And we still end up with a surplus. And we will continue our tree trimming and removal through JH Hart. And this will all be addressed by Derek when we go through this in more detail. And again, our five-year trend, you know, we're not spending a ton in major streets, but we're, you know, we're, the good thing is we're maintaining a healthy fund balance so that we'll be able to utilize that money for road work in conjunction with the capital improvement program. So, and trees, of course, which are important. And then our local streets, same thing there, we had to drop 13.8%. So 390,500 now from our Act 51 revenues. Same thing here, we added an employee, a full-time employee. Our local street does not generate as much revenue or doesn't get as much revenue. Although again, Matt and I did speak this week, there's a possibility if council's interested, we could transfer, when the time comes, we can transfer more money from the major streets to the local streets so that we don't have that large deficit in local streets. You know, we're hoping, and that was another discussion with Lansing that we hope, making some inroads with, they used to limit even more of the money you could transfer from major to local streets. I think Matt and I were thinking it's 50% now of the revenues, of the Act 51 revenues. So we may be able to assist the local street fund by sending some of that surplus to the local street fund so that the hit to the local street fund isn't as severe. Five-year trend again, you can see the fund balance is, it's dropping and that's something we could do through transferring from the major street fund. We might be able to assist that a little bit. Instead of, you know, increasing our major street fund, we can transfer some of this money from the major streets into the local streets so that fund balance is a little healthier. You know, get it, maybe want to get it back up closer to, you know, 750 to 800,000. And then our solid waste, we've got our budgeted revenue. Councilmember Henan, I noticed, again, a good catch by him, we actually had the chart in there. Sue Redden sends out bills for commercial pickup and he had caught in there that the chart itself in the resolution didn't have didn't have adjustments to a couple of the lines, uh, some of them we don't, we actually don't have the six yards to bill, but we corrected that, so you'll get a copy of that as well, it'll be updated. Um, versus what I gave Lori, I gave Lori one that didn't have those corrections. But um, you can kind of see where, you know, there is some concern with our solid waste uh, fund balance, where we're going to be. We have a slight deficit budgeted this year around twenty-eight thousand. Uh, we're going to be around two hundred thousand in surplus. And I think Dennis had, had let us know it's around six percent, um, which is a little lower than we want to be. You want to be ten percent or better consistently and, and having deficits, uh, you know, certainly we'll eat away at that. But uh, we will talk with council going forward, whether we want to look at a headly override uh, before the vote or somewhere down the road, uh, to make sure we don't run the uh, solid waste fund into a deficit um, fund balance. So we do still have the ability to levy the other water and sewer bill for residential and commercial yard waste, which uh, which will do. I mean, we'll continue to, we're bumping that up again. But you might get to the point where you throw that before the voters and say, look, if we override and, you know, maybe we can lower that amount and pay it through taxes. But it's always something you, you know, want to get some thoughts of the residents to whether they'd want to continue paying through water and sewer or pay it on their taxes. And again, fund balance trend, you can see it's uh, we're eating away at it. So it's to the point where there's concern and additional uh, decisions need to be made here soon. And our community development block grant, the program, uh, the early word is there's still going to be money available. Um, again, it'll remain to be seen uh, as we get through here. But again, to me, it's more important now with, with the impact of COVID nineteen that we're able to utilize this money to help uh, help those that can't help themselves. So uh, our plan right now is to use it for consistently. Again, we'll put money into sidewalks, try and accumulate that over a number of years. But we have our large print books for the library, uh, the Haven, and also the uh, snow removal services for Parks and Rec has been extremely popular. So uh, if, if we get our money, that will be our plan again for the upcoming year.
I just want to make one quick note though, that we have been supplementing the snow removal uh, in the last couple of years because it has been such a popular um, service that people call for. And we've both had supplemented and we've seen reductions there as well. So um, it's almost to the point where it's getting too popular and there's uh, we have far more wants than we can fulfill right now.
Yeah, good point, Matt. And, and again, that's always one that, that there's limits to the amount you can spend in categories. And you know, we, we, we've been pushing and asking, uh, you know, where there's a bigger need. If we could spend more money in those areas, it would be helpful. So uh, we'll continue to push on that. Um, our capital projects overview, um, the court building fund, we still have uh, around four hundred thirty thousand is what we estimated. Uh, the ice arena demolition um, is complete. Uh, there's still some utility expense there, uh, which I think, you know, Teresa will, will kind of fold that in as we go uh, into the arena. But that money is available for, you know, again, going forward for repairs, um, whether it's City Hall or elsewhere. And the sidewalk fund, obviously our sidewalk programs put on hold. Um, Derek's still uncertain right now when that will restart, that the money that's in the current budget and the budget going forward. Um, for sure, the current year, we'll probably push that back into next year. And then the idea of this one again was to seed money to basically bake a loan from the general fund until we get the program started and can start collecting revenue from the residents. But uh, this is one again, that we're just going to put on the shelf until uh, until it's more appropriate to get it started. And then the roads fund capital improvement, uh, that's going to move forward. Um, and again, I'll let Derek give you some more detail on where that stands. But uh, that's still planning to move forward. We've got, got a year of collection at least, so we can move forward with that. And, and as Matt mentioned earlier, we have the final payment on the eleven mile bond project that occurs next year. And then that will drop off uh, the following year, so there will be no more debt to pay on this project. And our water and sewer fund, um, our revenues are anticipated just under eight million. Uh, the consumption charge, about four point six of that, and then our ready-to-serve fixed is six hundred ninety-one thousand. The stormwater charge, again, pass-through costs of around two point four million. Uh, that amounts to an overall rate increase of four point six five percent. Uh, we did have that study done, we talked a little bit about it last year uh, for those council members that were here last year's budget. The uh, working capital is the key for the ongoing road and infrastructure, the water and infrastructure work, sewer lining. Um, so that continues, uh, I estimated, I believe, I just figured it out yesterday. We're still going to be a little over three million in our working capital, which is around the range they wanted us to stay in. Uh, four point six five percent, you know, although not ideal as far as an increase in rates. It's still a little bit better than we expected um, uh, to levy, but we're maintaining that working capital uh, by levying this, and that's the, kind of the key. Um, and then we did our average, which I know uh, all the Berkeley council likes to see. Berkeley's still second from the bottom as far as uh, average rates. And again, this is based on four thousand cubic feet. Uh, that's generally a household with a couple of family members. Um, you know, you could be on the higher end of this or lower end of this. Uh, where I live here in Clausen, we're in the middle. Um, and uh, I'm going to guess that that's going to bump up again. But you can kind of see everybody's trying to maintain enough to do some infrastructure work. But again, Berkeley's leading, to me, is leading the pack as far as what you're able to do on an annual basis and still, uh, still stay second from the bottom as far as what it costs an average resident. So uh, that's, it's a very good thing.
Hey, uh, Mark, a quick question on that.
Sure.
The um, uh, what I'm curious, that chart at the bottom, you're right, it is, um, it is good for ourselves and our residents to understand um, how our water rates compare. Cause when we look at our bill, it's like, whoa, this is, this is what it is. Um, if I'm understanding correctly, this chart at the bottom of the slide compares Berkeley's proposal for the upcoming fiscal year against the actual of the other communities. Meaning, you know, we don't know what those other numbers are for the other communities because they're still going through their planning cycle like we are.
Right.
So what this shows is our next year versus their last year, so to speak. So if that's true, then I think that does um, support your assertion that those other numbers are going to go up as well um, in, in a similar fashion. Is that, is that a good way to interpret this chart?
Yes, SAC, SACLA does do uh, an annual rate comparison. And you know, the numbers we work from, uh, obviously for Berkeley, we have an idea where we're going to be on average, so we can calculate that in. But you're right, the other communities are going to have estimates that aren't available yet. Um, what I will do is when SACLA does the updated uh, consumption comparison, uh, we'll update this chart and send that out as well, so people will see. Cause you're right, all these other communities will go up, um, you know, exponentially as well, depending on what they raise this year. So you'll see an increase uh, likely on all of the communities will go up. Um, and you know, Berkeley will stay where they're at. I don't think Bingham Farms is going to more than double the rate. But um, everyone else will, will bump up even more. So, so yeah, you're right. And, and it's good to show residents that because it's general, that's generally what you look at um, is what am I paying, but then, you know, where is my money going? And the good thing in Berkeley is, you know, you're spending, uh, again, and Derek will go through that. You're spending a, a decent chunk of money, a couple of million dollars a year on infrastructure in your water and sewer fund. Uh, water mains, sewer relining, those are all excellent things that a lot of these communities in here cannot afford to do uh, within their rates. You're, weren't likely they're having to bond. I can tell you in Clausen, we had to bond, we did a state revolving fund loan. Um, and our rates are still, you know, significantly higher. And we're not able to put money in every year to do infrastructure here. So um, it, it's a very good thing again, and you're right, getting that comparison out there and showing people, you know, yeah, excuse me, your rates are a little bit higher, but they're still comparatively speaking, they're still much lower than the surrounding communities.
And, and to your point, uh, we, they're getting more for their dollar too, because uh, in addition, uh, we are able to invest in the infrastructure. Whereas some of those other communities, you're, it's, that's not even part of the equation. There's an additional cost that's covered elsewhere. So yeah, that's really helpful, thank you.
And this mentions again, that, that water rate forecast. Um, and the fact that again, we're, our working capital is between three and four million. And that was the, the study, the rate study was, the anticipation was keeping it in that range, which we're, you know, we're able to do, which is a really good thing while keeping rates manageable. And uh, this year, just under two million is anticipated to be done with the water and sewer infrastructure. Which again, like I said, that's from your working capital, that is a phenomenal effort um, by the city and, and council's commitment to continuing that work. So you know, again, without having to enter into debt, uh, borrow money, it, it, it's a, it's a really good strategy that the city's taken and it's continued. It's been this way for a number of years and it anticipates that it will continue this way. And then again, five-year trend in expenses. You know, maintain around six million and we've jumped up again because of those additions in capital projects. Um, still making it affordable and still maintaining that level of working capital, so it's a great thing. And then Parks and Recreation, uh, again, the COVID nineteen impacts uh, have yet to be felt. Although we, we do feel the nineteen twenty fiscal year impact, uh, which we'll be amending in June. Um, some of those programs that just aren't going to happen that we anticipated would. I mean, the one thing is, is you have revenue and you also have expenses for those programs. Um, some of them are, are revenue neutral. Uh, but the summer camp, for example, we calculated this year that generates a net uh, revenue of about a hundred and fifty thousand. So that's a big hit, uh, obviously going forward. But we project about nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand in revenue. Uh, the hope again is that we'll be closer to back to normal next year, uh, which this fiscal year does impact. The camp fund, most of the revenue gets collected in the next fiscal year. So we've still got that in there, we'll keep our fingers crossed. Uh, fund balance will be between four hundred and five fifty. And I, the reason I have such a large range there is just uh, the, the, the lack of, you know, solid knowledge of what we're going to have and what we're not going to have. Um, and then capital improvements, we pushed quite a bit back. Uh, so we're at a hundred and fifteen for park improvements. And then the general fund's going to transfer that three hundred thousand dollars. And that reflects the uh, fund balance. And then the senior activities fund, again, we're, we're, that's a supplement. Uh, for a number of years, we were able to transfer a hundred thousand a year to Parks and Rec from senior activities. But uh, we've, we've pretty much exhausted their fund balance now, so we don't anticipate doing that uh, going forward. But they will have a, a, a real small fund balance at the end of the year, around ten thousand. And like I said, I, we had that transfer for a number of years, um, of around a hundred thousand, but we'll be unable to do that because of fund balance being gone. And I think that's it, if I remember correctly.
Okay, well, thank you, Mark, for, for that. And to get all of the things that Mr. Pollack just spoke about. We will see throughout our conversation, um, in getting to the, the numbers a little bit deeper. Um, council, I want you to, to know that with, with this being a little different model for us, I can't just look around and easily see somebody's hand up, especially if there's a presentation like that. So if you want to jump in, please just hop in and ask for a quick pause, so I can make sure that we are able to address your questions and then I won't skip anybody. Good? No, not good? Am I here? Oh, you're all muted, none of your heads.
Yes, good.
Got it? Check.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I can't even get any feedback this way, just see, okay, all right, you got it. Um, any questions for Mr. Pollack before we move on? I don't know what Steve's doing, but I don't think it's a hand up. No, okay, we're good. Thank you, um, let's move on to item number two. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number two on tonight's agenda?
Budget work session, matter of discussion of the proposed twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one city of Berkeley budget. A, city council, B, city manager, C, city attorney, D, city hall, E, community promotions, F, communications, G, public safety, H, library, I, information technology, J, downtown development authority, K, capital project funds, and L, public safety retirement fund.
All right, you have an ambitious agenda ahead of us today. Uh, so without any further delay, again, um, councilmembers as we're going through these, the directors of their respective departments, uh, we'll go through page by page, not necessarily line by line. Uh, if there are questions, which you, or, or items, line items that come up that you do have questions about, please make sure that I see you wave to jump up and down, do some things. I'll make sure that, uh, do our best to make sure all of our questions, all of your questions are answered before we move on to the next page. Everybody's good? Thumbs up? Ready to go? Okay, all right. We will start with city council.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll actually be taking that one. So I want to take you through the next, uh, the first couple here, actually. Uh, starting on page twenty-five of your budget book. Give anybody a chance to flip to that one there. Um, as in years past, uh, the city council budget remains largely unchanged. I'll uh, call your attention to just a couple of things as I move through here. Um, but the uh, no raises this year for city council. And I apologize for starting out the conversation that way and with that bad news. Um, but there's no change there. I do want to call your attention, the first item that's a little bit different than years past. Uh, on your contractual services, uh, we do look to have an outside consultant come in and guide us through a mission, uh, a vision, mission, and goals work session. Uh, this is something that we've been talking about doing for a couple of years to give us a baseline document to work off of uh, and steer our efforts both administratively, as well as with our elected officials for a couple of years. Uh, the timing works out very well as we, uh, as we're pulling together the master plan conversation and getting a ton of feedback about our community and the direction that our residents want to see us go. And uh, now even uh, with the tough times that we have ahead of us, I think it's uh, potentially even more important now to really align ourselves well with a set of uh, vision and mission and goals. And so you'll notice that there's uh, an allotment for that of eight thousand. Moving down to the next item, meetings and conferences, you'll notice there's a little bit of a difference there from the years next year and this year. That's accounted for the uh, every four years, the M M L conference lands in Mackinac. Uh, and that is happening in this year in twenty twenty. So that'll be the, uh, that is a full slate of council members going. Sometimes uh, we're able to pull that off, but sometimes we are not. But uh, we budgeted for full attendance there. And you see, we continue to do that in each of the items that we have here as well. Uh, these are enrichments, meetings and conferences. They, uh, councilmembers bring back a ton of really good information, uh, get a chance to talk best practices with their cohorts from across the state. council members bring back a ton of really good information, get a chance to talk best practices with their cohorts from across the state. And it helps even at the staff level to give better direction and set our Berkeley's problems in context with the rest of the state and more often than not, we come out looking pretty good, as Mark alluded to several times in his presentation. Okay, all right. See any questions or comments there? So now we're gonna move down and that you'll see is there's not nothing really of note on page twenty six. You'll see the that totals from years past. All right, I'm seeing no questions or anything. Okay, I'll move on to the City Manager budget. The City Manager budget, if you flip the page, begins on page twenty seven. Just want to note, you'll see from years past, our personnel costs are actually down based on some realignment we did in this office. We no longer have a deputy city manager position, and so that accounts for a good part of that decrease in personnel costs. The next item was pretty standard. I want to call attention to our consultant line item. Probably there at the bottom. You'll see that we have ten thousand budgeted. As you recall from the energy plan, the city was challenged with the energy plan to begin tracking its cost and energy usage. We had hoped to fund a facilities manager position this year, but given the context in which we find ourselves in, a great new position was not a viable option this year. So we're we're looking to probably reach out to a nonprofit. There's a energy group that we worked with to develop the plan. And so we potentially would go back to them and talk to them about taking on the work of tracking the city's usage and offering tips and small projects in order to lower our consumption from year to year. So we're excited to be able to fulfill, at least in part, the the city's adopted energy plan. So it's always good when a plan gets to get it's put into action and we're happy to be able to do that now. Moving down then to page twenty eight, on the professional development that which takes up most of the page here, you'll see we went, just like with the council, we went line by line, looked at full attendance from myself, our policy assistant, as well as you'll see in your CEO on occasion, that's Tori's position as Community Engagement Officer. We always budget for full attendance on these things, but we'll we'll continue to be very careful and we'll look at agendas to see what's worth sending either a full slate, just potentially a few members of our office to come back. And we will continue to be very careful about which agendas were good to us, which meetings we attend, and how that affects the potential budget here. Okay. It's eerily quiet, so I'm not sure if this is. Hopefully everyone's, everything's going well here. Flipping the page. You'll see the City Manager's budget comes conclusion there at one ninety six, nine twenty eight. Any? Oh, I see Ross is telling me to talk to the hand here.
Thank you. Yeah, well, first of all, on the energy consultant, thanks for bringing that in front of us, you know, certainly now more than ever, I think if we can identify the places of cost savings and energy usage. You know, short of having that full time facilities manager, you know, like you were talking about, which I do believe down the road, you know, is certainly necessary. You know, but in the meantime, if we can figure out, you know, energy usage upgrades and save the city some money, I think that's a a good stopgap measure. And then just one real quick, tiny, tiny question on the personal development stuff. Just curious about the little bit of the the five hundred dollar difference between the thirteen hundred for the MML convention for the City Manager for twenty twenty one and then eight hundred for twenty one, twenty two. I just I'm more just curious as to why that's. Thank you.
Sure, it's same reason as the the fluctuation of City Council's budget. It's going to be for the Mackinac trap. The MML conference. Okay, moving along to the City Attorney section. I'm sorry.
You're good. No, I think you're good. Continue, City Attorney.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mayor. If you'll if you'll jump, if you'll jump with me to page thirty six. See here, you'll see, here you'll see we account for both the work that the City Attorney does, but also our labor attorney as well. And then this, you'll see legal services, labor are broken out separately. As we've been discussing, we do have another tentative agreement for a twelve month extension for with our labor unions. So that means by this time next year, we'll be back at the table with them and depending on our labor attorney to to work with us on that. So you'll see that is pretty consistent across this year and next year. And then potentially the year after in twenty one, twenty two, depending on what gets done, we'll be able to adjust that. If we have a three year agreement coming out of this time next year, then you'll see that reduced a little bit. But generally speaking, that's what we, that's the amount of the level of which we utilize our labor attorney services. We'll note too that the city does have a subcommittee in place to review legal RFP. We anticipate that going out hopefully soon, now that things are starting to reopen a bit. And we will potentially be, or either, I guess the two options there would be to continue to work with the firm we have or to seek another, but this is based on a historical precedent will be typically budget for this role. And that, those are the little bit for City Attorney section.
Any questions from anybody on the City Attorney? Does not appear to be, as you mentioned, we are waiting for the RFP process, so numbers may change, obviously, based on the results of that RFP. Seeing no additional questions down Attorney, let's move to City Hall.
Good evening, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dan Hill is actually going to be taking you through. So Dan Hill is actually going to take you through this section of the budget.
Good evening. So just to jump right into it, my internet has been a little rough on this side, so please feel free to verbally ask some questions. I might not see your hand if you're lagging behind a little bit. We're going to jump to page thirty nine of your budget books. Give you a moment, only pages away. So as we go through this, we'll start right at the top. Most of our expenses have kept pretty steady. That includes office supplies, postage, maintenance supplies. These numbers are all in line. You might notice a slight uptick in a couple that's simply due to the cost of inflation for office supplies, as well as some tariffs that have been attached to some of our goods that we purchased from our vendors. Moving on down, we have our contractual services. Those are our annual memberships. Those allow us to get some of the great discounts that we get on a lot of the items that we purchase. Custodial services, we've continued to budget the exact same as we have in prior years. We have been out for RFP for janitorial services. However, due to the COVID, has thrown quite a few things off as we've heard tonight. That process was delayed a little bit, and so this will come back before council as a separate RFP item in the coming weeks of council meetings for full consideration. Continuing down, a big piece contractual services, we have a potential Parks and Rec ballot proposal budgeted for, this is in line with what we budgeted for last year in this exact same spot. Obviously, we would did not do one this year. This is in place if we chose to in the next budget year, start that process of putting together a potential village proposal for the community to decide on. Planning and wayfinding, that fifty two thousand five hundred is the same amount we budgeted for this past year as well. Again, due to COVID, we were unable to get those fabricated and started going out in the community between that and the DDA budget, so we have opted to push that to the next fiscal year. Telephone is another item that remains consistent throughout the year. That's just based on our bulk, our phone use in the office. Advertising, that's, we obviously hope not to fill positions. We hope not to lose anybody throughout the year. We keep that there as a contingency in case we need to do some hiring. Moving down to our liability insurance and loss expense, we keep those moving forward as well with estimates. Our loss expenses come from claims that we receive, such as if a brick falls on a car and we have to pay out some, that's where that would come from. Our utilities, as Matt just mentioned, working with the potential for reducing our energy use. This is one area that that would impact in the coming years. Since we've not started that process, we've continued to project for our utility use for the next year. Moving on down to property taxes, these are the taxes we pay for the property we own in the city. Specifically, the slines used to pay for a home that we own on Bacon, which is adjacent to the DPW yard. Building maintenance is around the same, pretty standard as far as our regular HVAC, our pest control, fire extinguishers, all important stuff to upkeep. And then we, of course, have our.
I have a question on that one.
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, first thing you made is eight hundred dollars. That just for that one building? That seems awful high for a one year inspection.
So that includes all of the different fire extinguishers in the building. So when you enter into the building, there's going to be one right there next to finance. As you can, as you continue, there's one down, I believe, by the clerks area, one by the conference room, one in the court building, and one in the kitchen area. And then I believe one located down by the museum.
I haven't noticed that line item.
I believe, I believe we paid. So. I believe we actually, we get. Jack, I believe we actually, we get bills for the total of the city's fire extinguishers to the City Hall, and so we attribute it to this account. But I think this covers the everything.
Okay.
Additionally, you'll notice additionally, you'll notice this line item used to be one bulk, bulk dollar amount. I believe last year was around fifteen thousand dollars. This year, in order to to make better estimation so that we wouldn't go over budget, I broke out some of our regular reoccurring expenses. So you'll notice the HVAC, pest control, floor mats, fire extinguishers, those are all standard expenses that we expect to be the exact same. And then that there's that bucket at the end for those general uncertainties that come about. And so as a as a means to make the number not need to be amended later, my goal was to break that out and explain a little bit more of the regular items.
Thank you.
Moving down, our office equipment rental is the same as it has been. We have our Xerox machine, our mail machine. The mail machine is utilized across all departments. That includes our utility billing that goes through that. The Xerox machine also does workflow scanning for primarily City Hall, however, every department can use it. Moving down from there, we have our professional development line. This is a new initiative that myself, as well as City Manager and Tori have been working on pretty heavily. We have a goal of further training our staff members and really trying to get everybody, get our lean staff that we do have fully prepared and ensuring that we're offering the best services to the community. So some of the in-service training facilitators, those are for things such as customer service, conflict management and resolution, diversity, equity, inclusion, really hoping to make our staff more well-rounded and better able to serve the community. Moving forward, additionally, we have the BSNA module trainings. Almost every single one of our departments uses at least one BSNA module. Most of them, that's going to be their general ledger, which is how they monitor some of their budgetary spending. However, we do have some such as pet licensing in the clerks area, utility billing, billing in the public works area, and building in the community development. Those are applications that we're really hoping to get the most money for or the most value for the money that we spend on them. And so training our staff to best use them with best practices, we feel is important. From there, in that same line item, you'll notice staff service awards at six hundred dollars. This is something for when a staff member completes a major milestone, such as five years, ten years, twenty years. It's a small trinket that would basically recognize them for serving the city for that long.
You know, you can save money by only having two of those, fifty year and a hundred year.
I don't know how many of our staff would hit those numbers. I know we have one that's getting close.
Why you save money?
Yeah, I tell you, I think Karen Endress is going to, Karen Endress is going to end up qualifying for the first one of those. She has been fantastically consistent for us and marked forty one years of service to the city this year.
Wow, that's fantastic. Another quick question I forgot about. In the property taxes, I know there's no bump up from last year and we purchased another house this year. Is that going to be amended? We purchased that house on Phillips, but there's no additional property tax bump up in that line for that.
Right. One of the reasons why we owe taxes on the Bacon House is it was for rent, so it didn't qualify as non-taxable. And so and this, that's, we don't plan to send, we don't plan to use the Cummings House in the same way, so we won't have to pay taxes on that particular one.
Okay, just wanted to clarify for everybody.
Yes, sir. And just a note on the the trainings and the service awards, one of the things that were a lesson learned in years past, especially as we went through the the lost decade and the downturn of two thousand and eight, was that public service can be a little bit more trying in those times as things get cut and the nose start getting handed out more frequently. And so this and the overall is a is a small investment in the large picture, but it's something that we hope keeps morale up, keeps our staff productive and more efficient than they typically would if they were unhappy with the context in which they work. So I appreciate council giving consideration to to that expense and we do hope it bears fruit, even if we can't put a specific dollar amount to it.
Thank you. So to round out this budget, we have our capital outlays. So in building improvements, we have the Museum Hall roof replacement at twenty six thousand five hundred. This is obviously an item that would go up for bid, not to exceed that value. In a contractor that repaired a roof for us last fall, we did have a leak which was impacting the museum space. We also have a number of technological items, including the CMNTV room back there, a lot of expensive equipment. And so we're hoping to get ahead of any potential new leaks in the future in that roof. And follow the advice of the professionals that said that we are near the end of life on that roof. The twenty six thousand would be for a full shingle replacement, as well as the the boards underneath, which if any of those were rotted, they would go ahead and replace those as well. As you can see, budgeted for the upcoming fiscal year, next year, was an expense that we put off by a year with another capital outlay. Is the potential for some some renovations to City Hall. That includes facade on the outside, as a lot of you have noted, the roadway that that could use some work as far as keeping the elements out. That is one that we are projecting for next year, hopefully, in light of COVID. And then finally, we have furniture, that general office furniture for two thousand dollars. Those are for some incidental furnitures, as well as you know, just ensuring that we have the money there in case something were to break. That such as desks or chairs or anything you can think of, even appliance. From there, we have our totals down at the bottom and.
I just have a question, like, don't mean to put you on the spot, but what is incidental furniture? Because I might try that with Mike, like, Mike, we need some incidental furniture. I just want to see how how do I couch that?
Yeah.
Couch that, I get it. Yeah, I get it.
Incidental furniture being, so this last year, we replaced our refrigerator. Thank you to council for for outlaying that money. If something were to happen where that fridge were to break outside of warranty standards. Or somebody's office chair breaks and we need to replace that chair. I know we think chairs aren't expensive when we look in the catalog. They are. Or, you know, our our lounge seating, that blue lounge seat. If we notice that, we have a lot of folks that are incapable of standing and we need another purchase of one of those.
Got it.
Or if that were to break, that would be incidental furniture.
Thank you.
I will note as well, since we're in this area, this is an area where we've made some pretty significant cuts. We had some other plans for the City Hall building. This is not, we're not going to be able to address the the former court space. We'd hope to be able to give that area a second life and maybe create some green and meeting spaces there. Uh, but that is one of the things that we unfortunately had to cut this year. So, um, first, uh, first of many that you hear about over the next two days. But they wanted to, uh, call attention to it.
Matt, did we consider, uh, putting money in for demolition of the Phillips house?
Yes, sir. We, uh.
Cummings.
Uh, yeah, the Cummings one that we just purchased. Yes, sir, we, yeah.
Yeah, Cummings, yeah.
Yes, sir. Uh, we, we did potentially have that. That's something that we potentially had to come back with council, council with later, uh, as a budget amendment item. If, uh, if for say our revenue projections turn out a bit better than we thought. Uh, but yes, we would like, that was there and had to be unfortunately removed for, for this round of budget.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any additional questions regarding city hall? Seeing now I'm seeing heads shake. Thank you, Dan, uh, for presenting that.
Um, I'm going to stay with you and I'm going to get us started on community promotions as well.
Right, let's move there. Go ahead.
So moving, moving right into page forty-two, that's our community promotions account. Um, this one's pretty cut and dry. We have a couple of basic areas that we follow. So our first one's going to be our memberships. That's everything from the Berkeley Chamber to the Michigan Mayors Association, um, the SMCOG, the MML. This is where we, we loop, we lump all of those group memberships together. So all of council is a member of MML due to that group membership. We just put this all in one account. Um, rather than attempting to break that out. Uh, so you'll notice that that has increased slightly over the past couple of years. Um, this past year wasn't right on trend, but, um, I did project out and work with those different organizations to make sure these numbers are, are pretty exact. And so that we're on course to, to be perfect there without being under budgeted. Um, moving forward, we did move the computer processing and website from this account into the communications account. Um, by sheer virtue, that's, that's truly where the website should be is in our communications as one of our main communications pieces. And then, um, contractual services, these are the same three things that we, we put in last year. We put in to help support the holiday parade as one of our most successful community events. Um, the Tri-Community Coalition and Berkeley Huntington Youth Assistance, um, both organizations that greatly impact our community. And we, this year, they, they capitalized on that budgeting and we're happy to submit this in the budget again to hopefully support them as well. For advertising, I will pass it over to Tori.
Hello, everyone. Um, so to kind of break down, um, the advertising line item. I have footnoted, uh, what specifically would be going in it. Um, there are a couple of things that we've increased, um, as such, uh, newspaper ads due to just traditional media inflation and what goes on there. And making sure that, you know, we can continuously, uh, advertise there, whether it be through a high school ad, um, or any other type of. Uh, newspaper ad that we'd like to share or promote, uh, such as the master plan, uh, would be one example. The next one is public promotional items. So this is any materials that we, uh, present to new residents as they come in via the chamber. Or, um, if they're looking for, yeah, the coined term that is used, uh, in, uh, the communication world is swag. Uh, but those are those types of items that we can, you know, promote to the public, um, if we look to do any promotions. Um, such as like, uh, I know before COVID, um, and explore Berkeley, uh, photo contests, those kinds of things to really just gain traction in those regards. Um, staff uniform, uniform, uh, promotion. So one, just to kind of really generate and capitalize on what we're trying to do. Um, aesthetically and for terms of the optics, as we've transitioned our, uh, way of communicating. Um, that not only impacts external, that also impacts internal, um, communications. So part of this would be inclusive to the staff that work there. Um, and then the last thing is vehicle signage. So this is specifically for like public works or for code enforcement. You know, when they're out and about in the public, we want to show that we have a presence there. Um, a lot of our code enforcement does utilize their own vehicles for that kind of stuff, um, on occasion. Um, as well as we do have our, uh, city vehicles, but they're not marked in any way. Um, so kind of showcasing that regard, um, so that way we have, uh, you know, those, that, that presence, uh, there. Um, and then I'll be talking with you guys in a little bit lower, but I'm going to pass that back over to Dan for community events.
Our final piece is, is, uh, an account that was known as professional development in last budget. Um, in working with Lori in finance, uh, we felt that that, that account was inappropriately named as it's more focused towards community events. Um, first is the Cruz Fest dinner. Um, as of right now, Cruz Fest is still occurring. Um, this is where we, we feed the, uh, the grand marshals. We did decrease this budget from last year. Last year, um, when we did this, I think it sat around eight hundred dollars. That was simply too much. Um, for kind of the extent of the, the dinner. And so we've dropped it down to five hundred. Um, we felt that was appropriate. The state of the cities, this is where the, every year council goes as well as the department directors goes. This is where the department directors, um, come from as a means to represent the city at this event, um, that happens in October. With this, we have increased that slightly to account for the fact that, um, there's potential for a venue change. Of the state of the cities. And so there's some uncertainty with how much a ticket will cost. Um, and so just like in the council line item, this was upped a little bit to account for that. Um, SOCMA dinner hosting, as being members of SOCMA, um, we co-host with Lathrop Village, Birmingham. Southfield, I think I'm missing one, Matt. Nope.
So, uh, ourselves, Birmingham, Beverly Hills, Lathrop Village and Royal Township.
Yes, uh, I'm missing a couple there. Uh, we co-host, uh, one of those events with those folks. Um, and it, it's budgeted at seven hundred. I believe it's usually hosted in Birmingham. Um, seven hundreds to be safe. I think last time it cost us around four hundred dollars to co-host that event. Um, and then last is a new inclusion is we're hoping to kickstart a new board and commissions, volunteer recognition sort of picnic, if you will. Um, to hopefully allow for those folks and recognize the truly outstanding volunteers that we have. Many of you know, there, there's a handful of folks that really, they serve on three boards and commissions. And then they go and they volunteer for the holiday lights parade and, um, just really, this allows us to put a little bit of money there to be able to hopefully. Um, recognize them and their great efforts that help keep the community moving forward.
I would like to tell you that, that's probably a little bit low if you're going to do it, because the last time I did it, it was about sixteen, six hundred and fifty and seven hundred dollars. I wish the council paid for each individual or handed up some money.
We, so this was based on, um, kind of some brainstorming for something we could do as far as like a barbecue or something like that. Um, always something we can revisit with all of you, um, and discuss further. If you feel that it needs to be increased as well.
Well, I do think that the picnic venue will decrease costs a little bit from what, what Jack was referring to when we did that before.
We did, we did it before at Farina's and we got a really good deal from Farina's, so it's not going to be much different, I don't think.
Yeah, that's fair.
All right. Tori, you want to close out this account for us?
Certainly. Um, so the last item, uh, under the community promotions, uh, budget is the Berkeley Buzz. Um, as you guys are aware, you do three issues. Um, it's typically done specifically on the Parks and Rec, uh, department. Uh, but something, uh, that we had, uh, proposed as a new initiative, uh, in conjunction with the Parks and Rec Department. Is expanding this to a citywide newsletter. Um, and we went and, um, just got, um, a baseline understanding of like what would it cost, um, as far as an overview for three issues. Uh, keeping pretty much everything the same, but just extending it to all of the city versus just one department. Um, and we would still have three issues on this accounts for postage and, um, the actual print and design. That's all I got.
Any final questions for community promotions for us?
Yeah, just a, a real quick one. Tori, you talked about the newspaper ads and just sort of the, the natural inflation being accounted for. Is there, uh, does this number account for just costs, um, that, uh, maybe incur, well, an increase in what advertising is going to cost as a, as a result of sort of this COVID situation? I know, like many industries, you know, the newspaper industry is being hit especially hard as well.
This was, uh, prior to that. Um, however, I, you know, I did make some calls and it, they have not stated that any costs have changed. Um, there may be some, um, additional accrual costs depending on the size, but if we were to stay at like a smaller ad size, um, we would be okay. It just is going to really depend on how big of an ad we, we would like to put, uh, in the, in the newspapers.
Great, thanks a lot.
Um, Russ's comment brought something to my mind. Uh, do we have any thoughts on, um, internet advertising, Google AdWords, uh, social media?
Um, that is in the communications budget, which I will discuss. Yeah.
Well, that's a great segue. Let's, uh, go into communications.
Sounds good. Um, okay. So hello, everyone. Uh, you know, uh, communications. Uh, if you jump to page seventy-five, um, which is the next page after community promotions. We'll kind of look at what's kind of happened in the communications budget. Um, this is definitely probably a di- a difference eh, from previous years. Um, as we've been transitioning into a new direction on how we communicate and what we communicate, um, there has been some adjustments. But starting from the top, uh, it's salary and fringe benefits. Much of that was, uh, conducted by finance. Um, not, not much has changed. It's just all in conjunction with what they have, uh, mapped out in that regard. Um, what you'll see next is, uh, program supplies and what that goes over is, uh, I footnote, footnoted out what types of ads and marketing. We're looking to increase this year, uh, print advertising, um, digital advertising, which would include AdWords. Uh, you know, promo ads, whether it be just web in general or social media. Um, it kind of expands all into that, um, contingency advertising. So that's any partnerships that we're looking to do. Um, and then community engagement outreach. Um, as you've kind of seen with the, uh, master plan, we've really, uh, wanting. We're really wanting as a staff and administration to up our game in terms of community, uh, engagement as well as changing that dynamic relationship that we have with the public. Um, so that, eh, has accrued, um, a proposal of doing, uh, more pop-up opportunities to kind of chat with us and engage with us. Outside of your normal paying your bill, interacting with us, you know, whether it be on social media or just in conversation as you're walking through the city facilities. So that's what kind, what you'll see under the program, uh, supplies budget. Uh, next, you'll look at our construct, uh, the contractual services. So these are just memberships. Um, for networking opportunities and chapters as well as to, uh, help engage and make sure we're staying up on the latest media relations trends. Um, and what's going on in that regard. Um, I have two that I want to start out with and then, um. For the rest, the, for the general group, um, there is also a coalition that, uh, I have been working with surrounding cities on, on just a networking opportunity. For communications people and municipalities. Um, so, uh, that'll be something that we look at to next year, but for right now, this is just a good start. Um, for engagement. The next thing you'll see in the line item is for website maintenance and domain hosting. As Dan had shared, uh, in the community promotions line item, we moved it to communications because it is a primary source of how we communicate. Um, and provide our information. Um, and it makes sense to host under my domain since, one, I'm overseeing it. And then two, it just makes sense to keep all of the things consolidated together. Um, next is cable production. So this oversees just, uh, CMN recording our meetings, uh, as they are today. Uh, as well as all of our other, uh, broad, live broadcast meetings. Not much has changed in that budget. Um, contractual services. So, um, as you see footnoted out in there, this is to aid in streamlining the way we communicate. Um, so that way everything's a little bit more concise and everything's going out at the same time, rather than us kind of jumping all over the place trying to manage. All of our communications channels. Uh, this just allows for us to streamline that a lot better. The other thing that you'll see noted too is we are going to be transitioning to a new, uh, digital newsletter format. Um, this is based off my analysis as well as internal, uh, commentary, as well as some of your guys' feedback that I've heard with. Our gov, our gov delivery service, um, you know, the, the setup of the newsletter, um, when you receive it via email or any type of e-blast that we provide hasn't been the greatest. So this just helps, uh, with that, um, giving us a little bit more flexibility. Um, last.
Will there be more space for additional word allowances if we do that or, no, okay.
I mean, whatever you like, we can even do a mayor, you know, message from the mayor every week if you'd like. Uh, but as far as the newsletter, we're going to keep that short.
Do a lot.
Yeah, we can do a lot. Um, the other line item that I do want to call out, um, that, you know, would have been nice to do this year, but we did transition to next year is the website and brand development. Um, it is one of the things that I know, uh, was fully expressed to me when I first started, uh, as well as something that I have duly noted just in my experience working in the public sector. Um, and we'll be, uh, working, um, on that, uh, in the following fiscal year. Um, but you know, with everything happening right now, uh, whether it be through our way of re-looking at community engagement plus the master plan. This is at least a lot of good framework that we can utilize and share once we go into the developmental process for the website redesign. Um, moving forward, telephone, that's just for the standard, you know, my cell phone, uh, city cell phone and, and access to that. Meetings and conferences, there's nothing at that moment. Um, most of mine got canceled anyway. Um, so you know, uh, liability insurance, there's, there's no update, uh, for that. The cable ad, uh, admin, uh, franchise fees, that's just for our participation through the PEG fees and being a part of the ICCA. Which oversees our, uh, broadcast network and helps us, uh, you know, from that, uh, helping us, uh, in getting into communications at the federal level. If we ever need to get to that point and anything that goes, that changes from our, our broadcast. Uh, the next line item is our equipment maintenance. So these are any, um, items that we may need to purchase if things break. Um, if we need new memory cards, um, not just for myself, but also for our cable station, um, when it comes to them being out in the field for us when they record. Um, our footage or our events. Uh, the next thing that I have, um, in terms of communications, which is on page seventy-seven, you flip over is, um, professional development. So these are some suggested items that, um, I am, uh, requesting to, uh, attend for, you know, continued learning, uh, for myself. Uh, so I can stay up to date on any, um, new ways of, you know, better engagement, better community relations. Uh, what have you from a communications or marketing standpoint. Um, there are a couple of events that are, um, still, uh, in flux right now. Um, the TEDx Detroit event, that's actually more of a private, um, sector communications, uh, engagement, um. Um, summit, but you know, there are a lot of good opportunities that I, I've seen, uh, within the last year that, you know, the public sector is starting to transition and try new ways and new techniques. To communicate and engage the public. So that's something that I would like to attend if they still have it. Um, the next one is the Michigan Digital Summit, which is hosted every year. Moving forward. Um, nothing in my office equipment budget that was actually transitioned and consolidated within the city hall budget. So now it's all in one space. Telecommunications equipment, a few line items here. Um, I would like to note, um, one of the first things that I did when I started was to do a full inventory, uh, and overview of what equipment existed. Um, as a communications, uh, for the communications department, but also, uh, you know, with, in conjunction with CMN to see what they, uh, what their needs were and what, what still existed. Um, and a lot of that stuff was outdated. So, um, I, um, I'm making the request to purchase, um, new updated equipment, uh, DSLR camera. Uh, that encompasses all of its accessories, not just the cameras, so the lenses, the stands, um, any lighting equipment that goes with it. Um, uh, in regards to, you know, me being able to go out into the field, uh, and cover our events, uh, or any other types of community activities that we, uh, provide at the city. Um. The next line item under telecommunications equipment was the replacement of the camera in the council cham- chambers. This one I do want to call out specifically, um, as an important need, um, as right now, even given the nature of everything that's going on with COVID. Um, and the fact that we do have to hold on the renno, um, completely. Um, it was expressed to me by the CMN team that, you know, you have one camera in a place, uh, that needs to be replaced in the, the council chambers. And this would aid in, you know, um, us being able to go HD as well as, um, making sure that all of our equipment, our camera equipment is updated in that room. Um, so that's that. Telview, um, Telview Cloudcast and the Telview tech, uh, tech support. Um, that is what we utilize to provide, um, our new streaming service, um, which we purchased in, or which we. Um, which we purchased in or which we transitioned to over to in January. So this is just a continuation of uh providing those fees. Um, the next thing under that line item is the InfoView hardware um for digital signage. Um, I won't go too far into the digital signage component, but specifically for the hardware. What that allows us to do is if um approved to get uh new digital signage in all of our city facilities. What it is, is it's essentially a hookup, um, like a little, I don't wanna call it, it's just like a, you know, you connect your wireless mouse through a USB. It's essentially the same concept, but instead it'll allow uh us to stream our live stream uh through all of our city facilities. So regardless of where a resident or community member goes in the city of Berkeley, if they're at a city location, they'll be able to stream our live stream. Um, within the building.
Sorry, I have a question for you. Maybe you understand. Uh, for years, we've been talking about putting a. Other screen on the other side of the council chambers, so those of us that sit on the right side can see what's going on when there's a presentation. Uh, Ross and those guys can see good from their side, but we can't see. It's been discussed for years. Has that been considered? Or is that in the budget or?
That has been discussed. I um, I know that it probably falls under sans budget. Um.
That's the book, okay.
Yeah.
That's how I set up the C A arrangements, so you're not allowed to see.
Jack, really quick, the um, the second screen, we did accommodate that for the city hall renovation that was cut out. Um, so there were gonna be two screens when we were gonna redo the court area, so um unfortunately, that was cut. So we do not have a plan to put that second screen in the current ci- um council chambers.
Okay, so Stephen Lurley and I will be able to see what's going on for another year. Okay, we we can live with that.
Okay.
I assume Stan and Tori, that part of the conversation also have a projector that would be mounted there that we wouldn't have to bring in and prop a couple reams of paper up underneath?
As as far as this year or the renovation?
Part of what we wanted to do, obviously, things have gotten pushed, but that was part of the the original plan?
Yes, um, in the renovation, I don't even know if there would be a projector. There could be two. We were, there was talk about two large screen TVs. Um, CMN had some very creative ideas, um, as far as what we could do when um they talked about it. Um, and I was actually gonna tour Van Buren Township. They did recently did a renovation of their, um, they don't have a council. I think they have a. Board of Commissioners, um, the IT director there um invited me out. They did some interesting things. Um, this was all obviously pre-COVID, so I have not uh, I have not talked to him since then, so.
Thank you.
So if I, if I understand correctly, the idea would be with the big screen, there'd be uh the wiring behind the walls and all that stuff. So essentially, the laptop could be plugged into the cabling and then it would just be uh displayed on the screen. Uh, so no need for a projector. Is that uh, is that what we're hearing?
That is one option. Um, they presented uh depending on size and and what they find in the ceiling and mounts. And of obviously cost, um, one option is the two screens. One is a potential high-def uh projector that is similar to um the conference room in uh Public Safety. So we're trying to keep all our options open and and see uh probably the, what we can get for the best value.
Cool, thanks.
Uh, continuing on from there is what you'll see actually, um, due to um the push of the renovation. Um, the update of the chamber audio system uh has been pushed back. Uh, with the renovation, we were looking to, you know, filter your, fix the audio, um, and essentially not fix the auto, I mean, cover it. So that way we don't have any more interference issues, um, as well as any other type of audio issues that we had incurred um since my start. Um, but you know, we're gonna have to just wait another year, so you guys will just have to listen to me saying remove your technology, just for another year. Um, and then the other thing that um I want to call out as well uh in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Um, as a added option, if we are interested, um, is the option for streaming apps. Um, specifically through Amazon Roku and Apple TV. Uh, it was not an option with our old uh livestream. Uh, for individuals that may not necessarily have cable, um, but can download a Berkeley livestream app. And um call up, call uh our show, our our livestream up and they could watch through there. So outside of that, that's everything in my budget. Does anyone have any questions, comments?
Questions for communications. Any additional questions? I know we were able to ask some questions throughout the presentation. Uh, I think it appears that they have all been answered, so with that, we will move on to the next item. On our agenda.
Public safety.
Public safety, yeah. Chief.
Foodie, everyone, if there's one. I've, I've, yeah, they're uh, they're hiding in there. They're, they won't show their faces, but they're there.
I see them. I see them.
One thing I learned.
Lieutenant Miller, Lieutenant Hadfield. There you go, okay.
Um, th- this is my third budget. I've learned that I talk too much, so I'm gonna do a, a lot of the stuff in the budget is a year-to-year thing. So please, if if you have any questions, I'll point out some uh, um, some things that are that are uh changes or unusual things. And then uh, please feel free to interrupt if you have any questions. Um, I'm starting on the top of page forty-five. Uh, one thing I'd like to point out is under part-time employees, uh, we actually budgeted twenty-nine thousand four hundred for that. And we're gonna project, we're probably gonna spend closer to five thousand. That's a position for the part-time FOIA clerk that uh we had opened for quite a while. And then we ended up uh hiring a, one of our current part-time dispatchers who's very efficient, so we'll have some uh huge savings in that account. And then going down. Uh, the, the uh, I'm all the way down to the bottom of the page where the memberships are. Those are, those are the same as uh past years. Professional development is pretty much the same as last year. Um, there'll be some savings there also. Uh, the Great Lakes Homeland Security Conference was canceled and uh I'm scheduled to go to a conference next month that I'm thinking will not happen, so we'll have some uh savings there also. So uh, from our um, looking at our approved budget to uh, uh, our requested budget this year is actually a little bit of a reduction, about a four thousand dollar reduction. Any questions in the admin one? Okay, I'll flip over to dispatchers. You'll notice the first line goes from a hundred and sixty-eight, eight to three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, which is a huge jump. Um, we were actually budgeted for three hundred and forty-three, uh, almost three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars there. That is to add the four full-time dispatchers. We've only, uh, we're waiting for the, for dispatch to move or closer to where dispatcher's gonna move downstairs to hire those dispatchers. So we've hired one and we actually had six interviews scheduled for the Friday after uh the pandemic hit. So we've had those open positions, so even though it is a big jump, we're actually from our uh, our approved budget to what we're requesting is about a. Uh, about a seven thousand dollar uh increase, and that is basically for a projected two percent raises. Um, going down, we're looking to hire a part-time dispatcher. Um, our goal is, right now, the way things are, if we have an opening, we pretty much have to cover it with overtime. We'd rather, obviously rather pay a part-time dispatcher that, if we have part-time dispatchers, they're not getting paid unless they're sitting in the chairs. So it doesn't cost us to have them unless they're working and we'll see a savings in overtime, so we're looking to do that. Um, pretty much the same, if you get down to, we will. Part of the issue is some of the things we wanted to do this year, we can't do because of the pandemic, either training or even some of the hiring. So we will probably ask to carry some money over uh, um, once we find out exactly what's going on. Uh, down at the bottom, um, contractual services, we typically budget one hundred dollars. We did this year also. However, we um, um, we paid a firm to to uh, uh, author a contract, uh, all-inclusive contract, uh, service contract. Specifically for Huntington Woods, but it can work for other departments also, so there's a a jump there, but it goes back to one hundred dollars next year. Uh, same thing, medical expenses, we're not gonna spend nearly as much as we thought we would. We'll probably have to carry some of that over. Um, we also uh dropped off the uh dispatch renovation, which is one of our biggest accomplishments this uh, this year, which isn't completely done yet. But as of right now, we're well under budget, so we're hoping we won't even spend that whole hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So from our approved budget last year to what we're asking for this year is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction.
It looks great.
Pardon?
It looks great.
Uh, thanks. Um, I hate, he's back in the room. He's, he's actually behind me. Uh, but I hate, uh, Jordan did a really nice job running that project and I usually don't like to compliment him in public, but we'll do that.
I just don't like him either, but but Jordan and and his crew did a wonderful job and it's very appreciated. The fact that they're under budget is even better.
Exactly.
This is Jack. Did, did Jordan do the math on this one? Because if you look at the uniform and cleaning purchase line, it says six hundred dollars per year times eight dispatchers. That's forty-eight hundred dollars, not fifty-five hundred dollars.
Um, that, there was uniforms in there too, I believe, just the standard uniforms. Unless, let me, and if there was, if that mistake was made, that was mine.
It says and replacement uniforms, so.
So that, that is replacement uniforms also.
I thought maybe Jordan screwed up, but no.
He says to take it back, but we'll just keep going. Um, for animal control, um. This is another one where we're, uh, we, we are asking for a new part-time employee right now. Uh, Kevin Palmer, who uh does a fabulous job. You know, we're contracted with Royal Oak, um, which actually pays, um, I think it was about a hundred or above, I'm sorry, forty-five thousand dollars a year. So they're, they're pretty much paying his salary, uh, but when he's not available, we don't have anybody to fill in. Um, he, when he's away at training, he was at a two-week training. Royal Oak's been really good about um, kind of doing without. But uh, if we have a part-time uh, uh, animal control officer, it's kind of the same thing. Once we get him on board, if they're not working, they're not getting paid. So uh, it'll be able to fulfill that contract. We're also looking at doing animal control for Huntington Woods too, if we can work that out, so that's another city. Um, and then our idea is also have that dispatcher cross-trained, I'm sorry, have that animal control officer also cross-trained, trained as a dispatcher. So it gives us another option and I, I used to say at my former uh, my former department, if they're not sitting in the chair, they're not getting paid. So it really uh, it's beneficial to do that rather than pay overtime. So that's, that is a uh, a little bit of an, well, it is an increase. It's a new account for part-time employees, but we think we'll be able to provide better service. Not only for Royal Oak or Huntington Woods, but our residents too, because when Kevin's not here, you know, we we will, we'll do that ourselves. Um. Then really not many changes there. Um, the animal control truck, it's uh, it's in, it's being um equipped right now. So we, that project hopefully will be done by the end of this fiscal year, but because of the animal control truck dropping off, it'll actually be going down almost thirty thousand dollars in this uh account also. And then we're going to page fifty-one. I'm sorry, I should have been saying the page numbers as I went. Um, top line is full-time employees. Um, it looks like there's a pretty big jump, uh, but this is another uh, uh, case where we had open positions. Uh, um, for several months, so we were actually, our approved budget was uh, two hu- two million eighty-seven thousand. Um, so we're going up about forty-two thousand dollars in this line. Um, and that, that's for a new position that is really, in my opinion, our highest priority this year is to have a full-time fire instruct. Fire inspector who can also be an instructor also. Um, with having a part-time fire inspector, we just can't get into the buildings as much as we should. Um, so we want to be able to do pre-plans, which aren't being done currently either, so we want to pre-plan for all the business for fires. We want to do more fire inspections. The fire we had over the weekend, we found some issues that really made it more difficult for us to do what we did, where if we can get into the buildings more and uh, and correct those earlier. And it was, it was kind of a minor thing, but it just, it delayed us, so uh, that is a high priority for us. Um, we also want to get this uh, this, this person trained um in more hazmat also. So when we're getting in buildings where you have an issue, that happened in Madison Heights, where they had a building with all kinds of chemicals in it they didn't know about. Uh, we figure the more we get in there, the more special type, specialized uh eyes we have looking at it, the better we'll be able to catch that. So that's probably our uh, our biggest uh, um, our biggest uh, uh, priority in this budget. Um, going down to overtime, um, and I, we've had uh, and I think we've, a lot of us have talked. We've had just an incredibly bad amount of injuries and surgeries this year. We've had three PSOs that have had surgery. Three others that have had long-term injuries, so uh, um, it has really hit us hard. Uh, one of the things, and I'll talk about the canine position a little bit, but one of the things that fire inspector, worst-case scenario, can al- also also help us cover some shifts. Um, and decrease some overtime a little bit there too, but the main reason our overtime is is up quite a bit is because, and we'll be asking for a budget amendment on that. Is because of the injuries. We also have uh, related to the uh, one, one of our newer officers, officers didn't get off. Field training officer till beginning of this year, and then shortly after is injured and he's been off since then, um, and he'll be coming back soon, so we're looking forward to that. But that injury played a part in this also, and our newest hire was in the fire academy when it got suspended. So she does not count as a staffing right now and probably won't till November. So that's another, even though it's, it's kind of an open position, even though the body's here, we can't count on that person for staffing. Um, until probably November, we were hoping it would be early August before uh, well, would have been a dream cruise, but um, um, that was delayed because of the pandemic. And then really that, the rest of that first page, um, we did budget, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I just had one question about that. You mentioned that the fire inspector might be able to help with uh overtime or or personal time off as well. Would the fire inspector be trained as a pu- full public safety officer?
Yeah, I'm sorry. It would be one of our public safety officers that we would put in that position and we'd hire to backfill a road officer.
All right, thank you.
But like, but like the canine, we wouldn't move that person to that position until we had an adequate manpower. Um, so right now, we don't, we'd have to, we'd have to make sure, um, real briefly, without going into a ton of detail, with the three P, three long-term officers that have been off. Each three of the four squads are short a person, which means they're already at minimum staffing every day. So if anybody's in training, calls in sick, vacation, anything, we're, we're, we're either having our, our swing sergeants cover it. Some of the admin people have been nice to be able to cover it, so we're not paying overtime, or we have to pay overtime.
Thank you for that context. That's helpful.
Sure. And then getting all the way down to pa- the bottom of uh page fifty-one, I don't see anything that uh stands out my mind, let somebody else have something. Um, and the next page, supplies is pretty standard. If you remember last year, we uh condensed that account to kind, kind of cover everything. Um, our plan is hopefully to do a citizens police academy, if not this fall, early next year, as soon as, as soon as it's safe to do that. Um, and really, I, I think uh, I think Tori used the term swag or tchotchke, whatever you want to call it, but we're lacking there, so we'd like to up that too. We're hoping to buy some with some funds this year, but that's kind of our, our um, our account that we use uh to cover meetings, supplies, things like that. Um, going down here, most of it is pretty uh, um, pretty standard. When you get down to uniforms. Uh, we are, we, we budgeted uh forty thousand dollars. It looks like we're gonna be uh, uh, oh, we, we already are over there. A lot of that is we had one of our two positions, the officers we hired this year, um, that was unexpected. We an officer resigned. So that we didn't budget for a vest for all equipment, for for fire gear, for all that, so that's why we're gonna be over a little bit there. Um, going down to page fifty, bottom of fifty-two, unless somebody has any other questions, I'll flip over to fifty-three. Um, with the uh, our, our fuel and oil, I actually, gas prices have gone down a little bit and also uh, with the pandemic, we probably haven't put the miles on, so that'll probably go down a little bit there too. Um, we did implement, we've uh, um, implemented our fire pre-plan, which goes into the position also uh with uh mobilize. Which we can do uh, pre-planning software and um, fire inspections, do it all digitally. Um, there, we're really excited. We're, we're scheduled to do the training in early March and that didn't happen, so we have it. We just, we're not using it yet because we're trying to learn it, so uh, uh, one of our PSOs, John Roberts, is running that. Um, so that's, that, that's one of the things we're really excited about also, so we, we're gonna have tablets, we'll see later on, in all three of our fire apparatus. Um, that can be able to access pre-planning and anything about the building too, so that'll increase safety and hopefully uh, uh, make our response a little bit quicker too. Down to uh lids for kids, fire open house and the golf outing. Um, but honestly, we don't know. The golf outing is not gonna happen and that's how we bring in the revenue for the other two things. I know there's still some uh, um, funds in the account that we could theoretically use. We're just not ready to say we can do it. You know, our thought was to, excuse me, we've already canceled the lid for kids. Our thought was to uh, combine the fire open house slash lid for kids, but we're just not sure that's gonna be safe to do that. Excuse me, there, the um, that's usually in late September and that may even be too soon, so we're gonna play that by ear. We may say we're not gonna spend any of that, any of those funds. Um.
I have a question there, and this is more for council sort of as a policy question as we're going through this budget. Things that we know have been canceled, such as this, such as, you know, the gulfs. Things that we know have been canceled, such as this, such as, you know, the gulf's outing and lids for kids. Do we zero it out in the budget so that, you know, it more accurately reflects what, at least a little bit of information we do have that we do know?
And I, and I, I'd leave that up to Mark or Matt, uh, too, but the, the, those, the golf outing brings in the funds, so it's, it's kind of a cost neutral thing. So I do, I, I do think it would help the bottom line, but it's really, you're not bringing the money in, so that the money's not being spent.
And much of the line, um,
I think that is more referring to items that we know, for whatever reason, have already, they've been canceled, we've already passed them, they're not going to happen. Even though they're in this proposed budget, in, in the budget right now, do we zero those out knowing that we're not going to spend those funds this fiscal year? Is that the question, Dennis?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Feedback from council members on that? And, and Matt, feedback from you as well?
Just to know, Mr. Mayor, from, from a timeline standpoint, for the projected budget, we're talking about many of these events happening in twenty-one. Uh, and so the zero out would come with the projected budget, not with the proposed budget.
Yeah, so we know it would be nineteen twenty, not next year, because hopefully we have these events next year. Um, and I assume that those will all be budget amendments at the end for everything that we haven't been able to do.
Yes, I asked a similar question during my just pre-budget meeting with the city manager and, uh, Mark Pollak with the finance director about the summer camp. Um, you know, we, we know now that it's not going to happen, why is it still in the budget? And my understanding is that it has been addressed. It's since it, while that one specifically spans over two budget cycles, um, that the numbers in there kind of reflect some loss from each cycle rather than just zeroing it all out for one year or the other. Did I understand that correctly, uh, Mr. Baumgart?
Uh, yeah, as we discussed, that's exactly right. And then, uh, part of it as well, from a revenue standpoint, from camp, as we're talking about again, camp, uh, twenty-one, as we get started for next year's summer camp too. So, yeah, that, that's the part that makes it difficult. That's, uh, one of the reasons why we can't just go with pure zero. We have to try to anticipate the, um, uh, tuition paying parents for next summer as well.
My personal opinion on things for this budget, since they've already been projected as part of this budget, um, to not zero them out now, but we'll, we'll make those amendments at the end, just to keep everything clean from a budgeting perspective. And, and, uh, Mark, if you have some feedback on that, whether that changes things or doesn't change things from year end?
Yeah, we do. I mean, for the current fiscal year we're in, we'll have our June amendments, um, which will try and, you know, account for everything we're not going to collect in the current fiscal year. Um, one thing the Parks and Rec Department has done is they've refunded, uh, what they know has been canceled. So if they collected revenues, uh, there's been, I did see some posting, negative posting revenues, which means the refunds have gone back against that revenue. But, uh, true, if we're, if we're anticipating now that these programs will happen, which is what we did, if we left them in the twenty-twenty-one budget year, uh, if we get into the fiscal year and then the decision's made that they're not going to happen, if we know they're not going to happen, we can pull them out. But we do, um, a minimum of three budget amendments during the year. We could even do four. I mean, if we do them quarterly. Uh, if we know early in the year, yes, this definitely is not going to happen and we've got it in the revenue, we'll put out of the revenue and the expense side. Uh, so that you can see the, the net impact, um, the revenue neutral, uh, that we talked about, that I talked about in the, uh, PowerPoint. Uh, programs don't have any bottom line impact and for the most part, but, uh, generally the programs, Parks and Rec have generate a small amount of revenue over the expense. Um, but the bigger ones are the, are the issues as far as what impacts the bottom line, but we'll have some early, um, budget amendments in the year when we know, okay, these things are definitely not going to happen and we can pull them out, so we can do them early. And then that'll give you, uh, every time I do a budget amendments now, I'm going to make it a point to show council how it impacts, uh, fund balance. So that you'll see by doing this, this is how our fund balance heater goes up or goes down.
Okay. I'm, uh, comfortable with this. Um, we, uh, since a lot of these events are revenue neutral, um, that, you know, a lot of the Parks and Rec, uh, programs, for example. Um, and, uh, as a percentage of our budget, it is not super significant. So I'm comfortable with that.
Laurie?
Yeah, and there were already, we already made adjustments for the big summer, you know, the summer camp and the, all of that. We did, uh, do a decrease to revenues and then offset some of the expenses for twenty-twenty-one, knowing that it's, we're going to lose some money right off the get-go. So we already have adjusted somewhat for that. Like Mark said, we'll just do budget amendments as we know what's happening.
Thank you. Uh, Chief, before you continue, I saw Lieutenant Hadfield VP pop up on the screen for a minute. I don't know if that meant he wanted to, uh, jump in. Drew? No, you're back to hiding. I know we were talking about the golf outing. Okay, all right, he's back hidden. That was his only chance.
And then the next thing I have highlighted is, um, the canine position. Uh, if you remember last year, we, we projected bringing in twenty-five thousand dollars in revenue and spending twenty-five thousand dollars in revenue. Uh, we've actually had interviews. We had, uh, uh, outside canine, canine handlers come in and conduct interviews. And we've, uh, we've selected the officer. Um, however, that position relies on fundraising. The way the economy is right now, we can't be asking people for money, for one. Uh, also, we, uh, we plan on using one of our old police cars we took out of service, using that for the canine car. And after consultation with the canine trainers, um, we think it'd be better if we got a specific car and get a tow instead of an Explorer that had a little more room for the dog. So our new goal is a, is a hundred thousand dollars for that position. Um, it will hopefully be less than that. But again, we, this is not, this is, we won't buy one thing until we have the money and revenues to do that. And with the way things are going with the injuries, we can't afford to lose that position of the road out of, right now anyway. So that probably will not happen toward, till towards the end of this, uh, the upcoming fiscal year or so. It's probably, it's going to be a while. It's still something we're really, we really want to do. We think it's a, it's a really good tool for us, both as a law enforcement tool and a community relations tool. So, uh, again, that'll be, it's a big, it's a big number, but it'll be caught, it'll be, uh, uh, revenue, uh, neutral. Any questions on that? Then, um, I'm moving on to page fifty-four unless, uh, anyone has any other questions. Uh, one thing on medical equipment, uh, we did purchase, uh, six, uh, ADs for the public buildings. So every public building, uh, as a matter of fact, they're sitting in my office. So, uh, once, uh, we're back up and running, we'll move those, all the city buildings. We'll be training all city employees on how to use them also. And then going down to the, that whole page, uh, all of our memberships are broken out pretty well. Unless anybody has any questions on those. And then flipping the page, top of page fifty-five, uh, there is a substantial increase in that account and that is, uh, because of our watch guard, uh, cloud, uh, we're, we're having the cloud hosted to where we can access it, uh, anywhere and not having our servers being used. And, uh, so far it's been working out pretty well. So there's a, about a sixteen thousand jump, which, uh, um, we did our proposal, we knew that, that wasn't a surprise to us. So we did budget that. Um, getting down to, it's kind of a, a minor thing, but back in the public safety medical expense, um, we had, we budgeted to do, uh, screening for all of our firefighters, which are thirty-two, and we under budgeted. So rather than do a thing, rather than not doing it the right way, we're getting, we're not going to spend that money this year. We bumped it up a little bit for next year. And we're going to work with Henry Ford to do the screening, which, uh, the main thing is cancer screening or, uh, all the hazardous chemicals were around. Um, one thing I'd like to point out down at, uh, utilities, uh, we, we actually budgeted to spend about the same amount. However, um, we've used the downtime for the pandemic to, uh, swap out probably about, and somebody can, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but about ninety-five percent of our lights, we switched over to LED. So we should see a substantial savings in, in the lights and also, uh, there'll be some rebates coming too. So, uh, we're hoping that, well, we're sure that number will be lower. We just don't know how much lower yet. And flipping over to page, uh, fifty-six. Um, there is a typo under building maintenance and thanks, uh, Jack for pointing that out to us. Um, it says generator maintenance service contract. That's actually the elevator service maintenance contract, which is, uh, kind of a big one, is seventy-two hundred dollars, but that's every year expense to have it inspected and certified. Um, you good with that, Lori?
Yep, got it.
Thank you. And then, um, some of the things, uh, another one of our big priorities is taking care of our building. Um, so we're looking, uh, we thought, we had originally budgeted, I think, for next year in, uh, CAP to re- repair our roof, which we, we were thinking would be closer to eighty, ninety thousand dollars. Uh, we're being told we can, uh, get another, uh, uh, several years out of our roof if we conduct about a twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, repair and then have preventive maintenance every year. So we're looking to do that next year. Um, Corey's actually working on that right now, so hopefully we'll be going out to RFP in the near future. Um, then I'm going down to equipment maintenance and you'll see this is a new, a new one is a generator service contract, uh, because we're out of warranty now. And everything else there is pretty much standard. Uh, vehicle maintenance, we actually had a, uh, one of our unmarked cars died, so we had to change over one. So we're going to be a little bit over this year. Uh, but we've been doing really well with our vehicles between Jim and Ron. Uh, uh, they've been taking care of them really well. So we, our, our maintenance, we're hoping will continue to go down, but we just had some bad luck this year. Um, everything else is pretty much the same. When you get to, when we get to, um, professional development, um, and we're actually, we're on a free trial right now, but we've started implementing power DMS, which if, if you're not familiar with that, Stan's helped us, which if I can, before I forget right now, Stan's helped us on almost all of our projects on this year between the watch guard, dispatch, fire hall, um, power DMS, mobilize. He's been involved in a lot of them. So, uh, he's almost like, uh, I almost feel like we should be paying him, but we won't on, on our, out of our budget. But, um, the power DMS is a, uh, it's app-based, mobile-based, uh, we're all over, if an officer's on the street, he can pull up, he or she can pull up our orders, our, our contracts, our traffic control orders. So we just started using it, but we're really looking forward to that. Uh, uh, we're always looking to increase the technology whenever we can, and that's a, that's a huge one. Um, and part of the reason on the next page is we're looking at, uh, uh, being accredited by the Michigan Association Chiefs of Police. It's about a two-year process. Another one, we don't think we're going to start towards the end of the year. Um, but that's, that's, uh, that's kind of the gold standard in Michigan. There's Kalia, which is, is crazy expensive, in my opinion, not worth it, but this is really, uh, one that's, that's worth it. Um, and then we have our, our typical professional development. Um, next line down, uh, reversible professional development. We actually budgeted eighty thousand for it this year and we're budgeting eighty thousand dollars for it next year. This year we're projecting to spend about thirty-five thousand. So in, that'll probably be a little bit lower next year, especially with the unknown. That is the contractual reimbursement for, for college, for, uh, uh, the public safety officers. And we have the ones that are either, uh, going to or have been taking classes. And, uh, I'm a big fan. I think it makes them a better person. Increases their, uh, uh, gets them out of the police realm where it's other, uh, uh, other professions also. So we're working on that. Um, next is our, our three oh two funds, which we get from the state. Uh, fire medical training, and I should talk about professional development also. Uh, we're gonna, there, we had a lot of training scheduled that didn't happen because of the pandemic. So we will probably be asking to carry some of that money over. Uh, but basically it's, it's advanced training, both police, fire and EMS. And there are some conferences too, that I would like to get some of the fire investigators to and, uh, and for the fire inspectors. Building improvements, uh, we're not asking for any money this year. Quite, uh, we do have a, uh, CB, CDBG grant on our lo- our lobby. Thank you, like, thanks for Matt for, for our lobbies. So we do have that project that's still going to happen this year. But with all the projects and all the, all the hours it takes out of, uh, out of especially Jordan and, and Drew and, um, uh, Corey, uh, we're not projecting to any building improvements next, next year, but then neck, the year after, uh, our, our H-TAC system, it'll last that long. We're going to have to tackle that. Um, and that'll take going out to our, uh, go out to RFP. And, uh, we just had them in from service and they basically told us it's on its last leg. So we're, we're hoping to keep that going, but it is an investment we're going to have to make eventually. Um, that.
Chief, just a moment.
Sure.
That, that's a good example of, uh, hopefully next year where a facilities manager would come in useful to, to manage a project like that and let police officers and, and lieutenants be police officers, lieutenants.
Exactly. And they, they've done a great job, but I'd rather have them doing what they're supposed to do. Um, and then we're also looking at, uh, adding electronic, uh, access to all of our doors. I know we had that in my formal department, former department. And, uh, it's, especially in a secured building, it's, it's really important to know who's going where and, uh, you know, keys, keys can be flown anywhere. Um, so that's something we'd like to do and, you know, we, I guess we'll have to play it by ear, how the budget's going next year. Then I'm flipping over to page, uh, fifty-eight. Um, pretty much our standard tools, uh, furniture, equipment. One thing under equipment that, uh, uh, kind of came out of, came out of the blue, I guess, for lack of a better term, is our LiveScan, which is a digital fingerprinting machine that we have to have in dispatch. Um, is end of life, uh, next fiscal year. I like to get things on the radar for, for council at least a year in advance. It wasn't on la- we didn't put it in, uh, the CIP because we didn't know about it. So I'd like to, uh, or CERP, I think it is. So I'd like to apologize for that, but that is something we have to get in and we get that through Clemis. So it's, it's, it's a kind of a, kind of a cost of doing business to book prisoners. Uh, flipping over to the next page, page fifty-nine, um, radio equipment, and I, I mentioned it last year and I won't go into a lot of detail because I'm trying to keep this short and I'm doing pretty good so far, is, uh, our radio system is end of life. They, Clemis cannot service it for us any, anymore. They're buying parts off eBay. We're buying things off eBay. So anything that goes wrong with our radios now, we have to pay for. So we, we've, uh, we've, we're going to be expending that entire amount this year. And next year, we're, we're thinking that we probably will the same thing. Um, the year after that, and I think it's in the notes, uh, there'll be an implementation, implementation of a ra- new radio system in Oakland County where we project we'll get probably between five hundred and six hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment at no cost of the city, but we're going to have to fund probably somewhere between a hundred and twenty-five thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand. We don't have hard numbers yet. So we've broken it down into two fiscal years to hopefully make it a little bit easier, but, uh, um, and if we don't need it, we won't buy it, but, uh, we do need to budget for it. Uh, next line down, kind of the same thing, the SCBA. Uh, we've, we've, uh, uh, submitted a grant through the AF, AFG, AFG, Assistant Firefighter Grant? Corey, let me know if that's wrong, but anyway, um, where we would only be responsible for ten percent. So worst case scenario, we don't get the grant, um, we would be responsible. Go ahead, Corey.
Right, yes, it's, uh, Assistant Firefighter Grant.
Thank you.
Because of the, because of the makeup of the multiple jurisdictions that are involved within the grant, it, uh, portion that we pay is based on population. So since we're, uh, we're still going to the other communities, it increases our population to get the lowest, uh, percentage that we have to add. So it'd be a ten percent, uh, cost. Roughly about, uh, two hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment we would have to purchase just to replace one for one what we have right now. Uh, our costs would be right around twenty thousand if we get the grant. We put in for it each year. We've not been denied formally in the last few years. They've told us they just ran out of money. So, uh, one of those waiting ski. Uh, but we're at the end of life, uh, on all our air tanks, uh, in the year twenty-twenty-two. They have to replace.
Corey, this is Jack. Would you explain the, why we can't just replace the air tanks?
Right, yes. So the, uh, the system that we bought was the latest and greatest and best thing ever, uh, when it was purchased. And now it's, uh, it's just not technology that they use anymore. So everything, obviously just like, uh, staying in tests with computers, everything just changes so much. Uh, and the average lifespan for, uh, the air packs is, depends on the use, is about fifteen to ten years probably. Uh, the bottles themselves have a life expectancy of only fifteen years. So they have to replace. It's about nine hundred dollars to a thousand dollars per bottle, air bottle. Not counting the, the air pack that it goes into and everything else. So the packs are still working, but as she said, like other radio stuff, we're buying stuff off eBay right now. Trying to keep these, uh, lifesaving breathing apparatus for us going. So there's just, there's no parts for them.
And also the pressure went up to higher pressure.
That's correct. So the, the pressure is delivered at a, these are three thousand PSI, so might, might not mean much to you, but, uh, it's more air pressure in the tank. We get a little bit more time out of the tank, uh, more breathability. Uh, it's a safer thing and a lighter weight.
And we did that grant, I think it's, it's all the public safety departments in Oakland County, all six, if, am I correct on that, Corey?
Correct.
So that, that helps our chances too, rather than us just doing it ourselves. So we're, we're hoping, um, you know, we had a grand expert look at it this time. Uh, so we're, we're, we're optimistic we'll get that hopefully. And we do have a little bit of time there too. Um, then going down to vehicles, um, we did push back one of our marked patrol cars back to next year. Um, so that saved roughly forty-three thousand dollars. Um, so that got pushed back. Uh, down to car computers, um, we are, we are looking to purchase tablets for all three of our fire apparatuses, as I mentioned, and, uh, And that, you know, some departments have the mobile data computers, which we have in patrol cars. However, those are a lot more expensive to buy for one. And then there's a yearly connectivity fee where with the tablets, we think we'll get better bang. And we can, we can put our own software on it too. That's under in-car computers. And then we just have repair of our current SCBA. And again, most of that we're getting, we're getting parts off eBay. When things get into life, you gotta do what you gotta do. And that's all I have unless there's some, any questions.
Well, thank you, Chief, and thank you Lieutenant Miller, Lieutenant Hadfield for being on the phone and for Lieutenant Coburnet for being so well. I had to the background, the chief did not have to yell at you once. All the other guys around here. Any, anything Corey or Drew you wanted to, to add in that we maybe haven't covered? And I know you guys have been here and stuck with us. Was there anything we can address?
I just want to say thank you for the support that you've given us to make the improvements that we have in the building. The discussion about a facilities manager would be greatly appreciated on our end. I'm not a construction guy, so going to RFP, I, I really am cautiously entering these RFPs. Not knowing really what the lingo is and stuff, going off guidance from other people. But we want to do the right thing over here, obviously. So that's, that's something that's very time consuming on our end.
Thank you, Corey, for, for that feedback. Chief, are, are fire trucks still, still on track for delivery? Has that been changed at all?
Thanks for saying that, because I had a note and I missed it. We're, Corey's gonna be going out to, what state you're going to, Corey?
South Dakota.
South Dakota. Go ahead, Corey, go ahead.
So there's, there's two milestones for the truck. We go to the midway point where it's halfway built. We take a contingent of our group out there to take a look at it, make sure everything's on track. And then we go back to the final inspection. Because of the pandemic, they closed the factory, obviously, to any outside visitors. So built in the price of the truck is the travel, go undo these inspections. The nice thing about that is since we didn't travel, that money goes back to the extras and tools and equipment and, and extra mounting of equipment that would have come out of our pocket later on down the line. So it's, cost wise, it's a benefit to us. So the truck's on track to be final inspected, June first, I'll be flying out there. And then probably within a week or two, it's going to be delivered to Michigan, to Freeland, Michigan, to our fire. Where they're gonna do all the final mounting, customizing some shelves. I'm hoping, fingers crossed, Fourth of July, second week of July at the latest, that we would officially take delivery. The last thing they would have to do is ladder in, and that'll be done in Clinton ownership at our provider that does that.
So hopefully if we are able to do the fire safety open house, that would be a nice treat in the late fall.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Me?
I'm ready.
Thank you. So the savings that you mentioned, because the fire truck could not be inspected. I, I know that that whole thing was budgeted and I know that then it will be a savings because you'll put the money onto the things that you mentioned. But is it possible that that money could be diverted for the dog?
I, it's, 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 it's actually a pretty small number. I'm not.
Oh, okay.
It's not, it's not what I thought it was. It's, it's probably a couple of thousand dollars. I think that could probably be used better in, in getting the fire equipment we need.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Like you're thinking though. Maybe Dalmatian for the fire truck.
Any other questions for the chief, Lieutenant Miller, Lieutenant Hadfield or Lieutenant Coburnet in the background? Matt, behind.
Mr. Matt, I just want to call your attention. If you look down across the historical total appropriations for this account, you'll see they've hovered around the, above four million each in the last couple of years up until the projected budget here. I just want to publicly thank Chief Kane and his team. They were very, very thoughtful on what they were gonna request from council this year. And you'll see where, while the amount is lower than the historic, you'll see as he's gone through item by item, he, he's really provided for in many regards, upgrades to the safety of not only his officers, but our entire community. So just want to give him some public kudos.
I don't think it's any secret that our, our department is certainly one of the best when they're on the job. But they also take very good consideration care. As we saw with their dispatch in their own building, taking care of that, working very diligently on that, coming in under budget. It's, it's a pretty high bar you're setting for your department chief and, and your administrative staff. We're certainly appreciative.
It's not just me though.
As much as we can support our officers.
Thanks. It's a team effort. Thanks. It's, it's a definite team effort. I, I, we, we work together very well and, and you know, I don't want to take much more time. But it's not only us, we, we're, we're really well with other, the other city departments and, and with council. So we appreciate the support because it's, it's a big team. It's not just us.
Thank you, Chief. We will move on. Our library director, Mr. Matt Church, has been anxiously waiting and Matt, you're up.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to get started on page seventy. I just want to comment again that this has all developed pre-COVID. So I'll make comments about how we've modified or adjusted. I am pretty happy with how we've been able to still serve the public during the closure. But I'll make some comments on that as we go through. So originally there were no major staffing changes in this budget year. I have had two staff members resign since the library closed. So we'll be looking at ways to kind of adjust our staffing and see where we need to move things. I don't know yet where we'll be at in terms of being open to the public, service hours, service model, all of that. So I don't have any recommendations on that just yet. But I did want to let you know, we did have two staff resign in the time that we've closed. No major changes on the rest of page seventy as we look at materials and supplies, postage. No real changes in materials, magazine subscriptions, things like that. There was a small increase in downloadable content. Our cooperative group voted to increase our cooperative buying of digital content. And I, I do want to say that this is really, this digital content, especially right now as the library is closed, is huge. That we're still able to serve the public in some capacity. I know that we're not meeting all the book and information and entertainment needs of the community. Some people don't have devices, they're not connected. But our usage has really surged in this area and I'm, I'm glad that we have invested in a variety of platforms so that we can serve people in several different ways. I know some libraries have just one pool of content. We have three right now and in the process of adding a fourth. So I'm really happy that we're still able to provide service to our patrons there. Program supplies at the end of last year's budget. Mayor Dan had asked, what, what change would you like to see in the year ahead? And I, I did ask that we increase the library's responsibility for program supplies. That's been a constant thousand dollars for the last five or six years. And I'd like to have us take a little more ownership of that rather than relying so much on the friends of the library. So that's changed to twenty-five hundred. The Friends contribution remains the same. If that amount, if we don't bring in that much from the Friends, then we don't spend that much. So the ten thousand is what we expect to bring in from the Friends. I'll just comment briefly that they've canceled their May sale. So they're not bringing in revenue there. They did make the decision not to charge any membership fees for the Friends for this renewal cycle. Just in the interest of goodwill to the community, still wanting to keep people engaged and not wanting to take anyone off the books due to inability to pay. So I don't know entirely what our programming is going to look like for our summer reading program. We're shifting to an online model. We've contracted with some of our performers and presenters to do online programming. So we're just gonna have to see what kind of response we get from the public for that. Most of the presenters reduced their fees for the online offering. So this, this summer is just sort of an experiment to see what people think of it. We did a book discussion today, our Tuesday afternoon book club. Met, they've been meeting for twenty-five years in person and they took the bold step to meet on Zoom today. We had seventeen people there for that and they were, they did really well. So that was good to see. It just kind of shows that I think the public is going to be responsive and flexible with us in terms of programming. So we'll see, we'll see where all of that goes. No major changes in maintenance supplies. The membership is just the Michigan Library Association. I'll just comment that they've been really helpful during the COVID nineteen closures. The impacts to libraries, they've been coordinating, training opportunities and things like that online. So grateful to be a part of that organization. Custodial services, as Dan mentioned earlier, we're out to bid for that. So we'll see where the numbers fall. We did just keep last year's numbers in there. Let me see, no major changes with contractual services. Our library cooperative usually recommends that we allocate a small increase for the automation cost. That's our shared catalog. That's our patron database. They've been doing lots of things for us behind the scenes to keep our patron accounts running. They, some things are on hold with them right now. So we'll see how they respond moving forward with maybe a new service model. But it's possible that there could be some changes with our cooperative there. Let me see, really no major changes. Page seventy-two there. Insurance, utilities, building maintenance, all of those remain pretty consistent from year to year. Our office equipment maintenance is really just keeping things running, paying for our copier, paying for service on that. We do pay or have budgeted some professional development and just like many of the other departments, some of that has been canceled or retooled. So we'll see how that adjusts for this year, but I would like to plan for professional development in the new fiscal year. For building improvements, I'll just mention that in the current fiscal year, I've let Mark and Matt know that we'll be holding off on a painting project. We were going to be doing interior and exterior painting. That was budgeted for thirteen thousand dollars. We can hold off on that. It, it's nice, but at, at this point with everything going on, we can delay that a bit longer. So in the upcoming fiscal year, the replacement of staff office furniture is the biggie for us. So we have a lot of laminate furniture in our staff area that was installed twenty-two years ago during the building renovation. And the laminate has started to separate from the wood surface. So at the corners of all the desks, you have the top laminate splitting and then you have this laminate splitting. So I've put strips of tape to kind of hold it together and make sure arms aren't getting pinched. And then we've also drilled some screws into the work surface as well to hold it down. It has created some big bubbles on the work surfaces. So if you set something down, it can tip over pretty easily. So this would be the replacement of all of that with module, office furniture. And then it would also replace the overhead cabinets at the same time. So staff will be very excited and grateful for that project. Reupholstering the fourteen lounge chairs, that's currently a budgeted project for the upcoming fiscal year. If push comes to shove, I'd be fine with letting that one go. It's in there now, but I'll just mention that as an aside. No changes in books and rented materials. Really grateful that those numbers have stayed solid over the years. That's what our patrons come to us for. So one of our super most important things that we offer for the public. And then the final piece of the budget is book carts. I'm sure that some of you have heard when we talked with staff about changes that you'd like to see, what's important to you. Book carts came out as the, one of the top priorities with library staff. So I don't know exactly how old the book carts we have are, but some have handles that pop off occasionally. Some have taped handles. Some have, you know, kind of like a shopping cart, you know, one wheel that never cooperates. So yeah, they're lots of fun. So it'll be nice to replace those and get a nice selection of carts for staff. That's, that's all that I have. Any, any questions from anyone?
Before questions, Matt, a couple of comments. One, I want to, you know, thank you for the job that you normally do, but as innovative and as creative and as resilient as you have been during COVID nineteen, to still be able to maintain a level of service that our residents certainly not only have, have come to expect, but, but even able to exceed in, in many aspects right now. Second comment I want to make, you alluded to, you alluded to early on that, you know, I asked, in, in the past, in most years, I've asked all the directors, what else, you know, what else would you want? And I have made the conscious decision to not do that this year. Certainly just because of the environment that we're in and, and talking about at that point, those are certainly more on the lot category, not the needs and, and trying to certainly stick to the needs in, in this budget. But I thank you for all of the thought that you've put into what can be moved into next year and what do we need to do now to maintain our level of service.
Good. Yes, thank you.
Natalie, you have a question? Lieutenant?
Yes. Thank you very much. Just like the mayor said, for your, your thoughtful approach to this budget. I do know just from my participation as the council liaison to the library board, how thoughtful you've been in possible ways to transition from where we are now, how you're serving the community mostly digitally, to maybe phasing back in some interactions with the public, whether that's pulling up and picking up materials or deliveries or having a partition between your staff and, and the, the residents. Are there any of those possible scenarios that would require significant expenses that would go into this next budget cycle that you?
Thank you. Not, not really at this point. So there will be some costs with the Plexiglas. But I don't expect it to be a huge expense. So I think we'll see savings in some other areas that we're able to scale back or need to scale back on. So I don't see our, at least initial delivery options in curving, incurring a big expense.
That's good to know. Thank you. And thank you for doing all that research. I know none of that is set in stone at this point. And it is just a matter of thinking of possible ways that you could reopen safely. And I think that the amount of thought and research you put into it is fantastic. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for our head librarian? Seeing nobody jumping up. Thank you, Matt, for being here and again for all the things that we've spoken about. Putting forward a very diligent but creative budget, being respectful of, of the circumstances that we're facing. And you in particular are certainly facing a non-traditional time as a librarian, as our, as our director. So thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And we will now move over into Stan's world.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. We are at the top of page seventy-eight. I'll go over some of the, kind of the bigger changes or highlights of my budget. In the staffing, we, back in September, we were able to hire a quote unquote, I guess helper for me. He's listed under Infotech Coordinator. His name is Harrison Porter. I know some of you have met him. We kind of stole him from Parks and Rec. He was a camp counselor there. And he is studying IT at OCC right now. And he has been a great help as far as desktop support. He pretty much. He pretty much single-handedly rolled out most of the new PCs that are in the city. And um, is just a very great asset to um the city in general, so. Um, he is budgeted for next year for, he's currently working two and a half days. We have him budgeted now for three full days. Uh, while he is attending whatever, well, what the new school will be. Um, that that should be an interesting uh conversation with him as far as whether it's going to be online or in person, so. Um, next is a new account, software maintenance and subscriptions. And probably the last five years, software has not, is turning into a maintenance or subscription and not a capital purchase. So I'm starting to shift my budget to reflect uh true costs of um. Software or software subscriptions or software as a service. Um, eventually my software uh budget later on, nine eighty six will probably go away. Because everything in the IT world is most likely going to go to some type of uh subscription based. Um, most of the IT companies prefer it that way. They prefer an even revenue stream. Versus the roller coaster of um highs and lows when it comes to purchasing. Uh, equipment supplies, that's another one where I'm trying to truly reflect my budget. Um, standard support equipments, all the widgets, cables, adapters, chargers, that sort of thing. Uh, in addition, I'll be adding uh more storage to our server cluster. Um, in anticipation of uh the video truck, all the videos that are being for sewer inspections. They will start being uh put onto the server. Right now, they're on the video truck and backed up onto external hard drives. Uh, we've uh expanded the wireless network within DPW. So that the video truck will then be able to um download all the videos to the server. In addition, uh, the museum with all the pictures that they have, currently they're doing a backup on an external drive. Um, their laptop will actually be connected to the city network and all of their hard work will then be on the server. Anything on the server is then cloud um is being done via cloud backup every night. Um, so as far as any type of recovery or anything, it will be offsite. Um, I'm moving to page seventy nine. Contractual services are pretty much going to stay the same. Um, probably the big thing is for this year is our fiber, private fiber network is approximately five years old. Um, in the budget, I want to be a little more, I want to be proactive since we've become very reliant on the fiber for our phones and our network. Is I'd like to have a full physical inspection as far as the actual physical cable and all the attachment to the poles. Um, if there is any, um, and that's just for the physical inspection. Uh, later on, uh, you'll see that network services up on the top has been slightly increased. In anticipation of any repairs for that, I'm not anticipating any, but after five years of weather and wind and everything, I'm. There could be some um just small adjustments for that. Um, everything else is pretty much the same as far as um any type of um firewall monitoring. Server, the poll attachment fee to DTE and AT&amp;T, uh, everything else is pretty much the same there. Uh, professional development is the standard IC uh IT training. Um, the GRR conference is a non-government security conference. Uh, I attended my first one last year. Uh, it was very eye-opening and sobering at the same time. As far as some of the security things that uh we need to do. So I plan on going back hopefully in the fall, if it is, if it's going to be continued um next year. And then the MyGMS conference is the uh yearly IT conference of county, state and local IT directors. That's also in the fall, so I am hoping that that will still uh continue on also. Uh, capital, uh, as far as office equipment, uh, the big ticket item that you see is the security camera system. That is uh specifically for public safety, for public works and also merchants park. Um, the major cost will be uh public safety and public works. Only because uh we targeted those two uh specifically. Um, public works, their camera system is maybe, uh, I think Sean said late two thousands. And uh, public safety is mid-two thousands, so they're over a decade old. Um, they're hard to find parts. Um, we haven't, I haven't resorted to eBay just yet. But um, it is a challenge to keep things up and running, especially in public safety. We've already had one of the cell cameras go out, so we've actually been able to get a loner to cover the cells. But um, right now, a lot of the infrastructure from the dispatch upgrade, the wiring has already been uh installed. So it would um be very cost-effective to actually uh install the system. Cause we would not be installing any of the actual cabling or anything like that. Um, merchants park, um, obviously with the new splash pad and everything, uh, public safety would like some type of monitoring. Um, with the dispatch upgrade, there are a number of displays in there. And we can uh dedicate a display to a lot of the security cameras as far as at merchants park. I know with public works, they're looking at maybe uh down the road an automated gate, which we could then control remotely from dispatch. So the camera system would help with that. Um, the uh next big ticket item is the phone system upgrade. Uh, this is part of the dispatch kind of upgrade as far as uh a different phase. Um, we had a vendor come in to help us with some of the dispatch upgrade. And we've identified some issues that um that need to be uh hopefully resolved. And some ongoing lingering issues that we've uh had with the system, that is approximately ten years old. Um, this would help with not only dispatch, but with um active shooter training that we had recently. That we could use the phones as an intercom system, being zoned out, have alerts. Um, and also would uh help with some um potential mobility. Uh, with some work at home stuff uh post-COVID. And um, we're looking to hopefully do that. Um, uh, if if passed uh as quickly as possible come July. Um, the replacement monitors that you see are um replacing a lot of the old monitors that we have. We, I replaced all of the uh obviously PCs, but monitor wise, most of the monitors are at least a decade old. They are non-high def, they are anywhere between fifteen and seventeen inch monitors, very small. Not a lot of landscape for um many of the programs we use like BSNA, uh, spreadsheets, that sort of thing. That would cover pretty much most of the monitors that are uh within the city. Um, PC equipment is for any type of uh upgrades as far as the um. From the PC replacement that um that occurred, um, we have a PC actually in the range. Um, we have some other outlying PCs that um would be, this would kind of cover the second phase of that. Um, nine eighty six software, eventually this account will go away or downsized as far as uh capital expenses. Um, most of these are going to be renewals and and move into the uh seven sixty account that um I talked about.
Hey, I have a question, a quick question?
Yeah.
How come seven sixty and ninety six are exactly the same?
Cause some of those needed to be moved over to the following fiscal year, so that was just a clerical error, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Um, and that's about it. Um, any questions, comments?
Any questions for Stan? Uh, as we've already heard, um, you know, Stan not only is is this budget uh that we just saw. But he is pretty much everywhere else in the city as well, doing yeoman's work, trying to upgrade and increase our digital capacity. As municipality across the board. Um, and again, we certainly appreciate what you're able to do and and the fact that you're also trying to do it as economically efficient as possible. Which I feel like is just another word for cheap, but smart, maybe not cheap, let's let's call it smart.
How about value?
There you go.
I know you're driven.
I I I certainly appreciate that. Um, Steve?
Yes, thank you. Uh, Stan's world, Stan's world, excellent. Sorry, just had to get that out. I actually did want to comment to say, uh, Stan, thank you. Um, both as the liaison to the Technology Advisory Committee, uh, that group um looks to you for insights and vision and and um, you know. Opportunities to uh for them to spread their wings a little bit and and that committee's been moving along very well. Uh, thank you for that. And as we can attest to even with this very meeting right now. Uh, we find ourselves in times where the um, the the cyber and digital infrastructure that we have is more important than ever. Uh, and so thank you for your continued careful eye on the um, the day-to-day operations of this IT infrastructure. And uh, and to that point, have you, um, i- as we have done more of the work remotely kinds of things. Um, such as these, these calls here tonight, have you noticed any additional strain on the city's uh back hall, the infrastructure that we have? Now that we're scattered from all over the place, um, or has it lessened the load? Because we're actually doing less on-prem uh with the fiber that we have. Any, any insights you could share in terms of what you're seeing? In terms of the consumption or stress on our um, on our IT infrastructure?
Yeah, um, I can definitely tell you there has been an increase only because of the remote uh access. Since we're using a a secure VPN connection into the firewall, we have made some adjustments. Thanks to the fiber and to actually Matt Church, we've been able to offload some of the public safety. Um, traffic over to the library since the library is closed. Um, and that has freed up some valuable bandwidth so that everybody can work remotely securely. Uh, without any major slowdowns. Um, there were some hiccups obviously at the beginning. Uh, WOW is um a not fully um ready for the uh increase as far as um home use. Uh, both on the business side and uh for residential. Um, so it took about a a couple of weeks kind of for them to straighten uh back out. But based on user reports, everybody uh seems to be doing well. Um, I ask on a regular basis how they're doing. Uh, we have a dedicated account rep that I check in with at least once a week. Um, so to kind of uh, in anticipation of any um maintenance or uh any issues that might pop up that could affect us. He's been very uh communicative as far as letting us know that if we have any um uh unplanned or even planned um outages.
Excellent. Thank you again.
Sure, you're welcome.
Dennis?
Yeah, um, bouncing off of uh Jack's question, uh, with the duplicate uh seeming duplicate computer software and. Software maintenance subscriptions are, um, is forty-two thousand-ish gonna come off the budget?
Yes, that was uh, I didn't even know that. After I added it, I didn't delete it. I apologize. So yes, that will come off.
Okay, great.
Okay?
Any other questions for Stan? See, nobody. Oh, there's it, yep.
I don't have a question. It's really more of a comment and I, I'm sure it goes without saying that I don't even pretend to understand. Everything you do every day, all day long, to keep our city um running the way it is um in terms of the IT world. And I just want to thank you for all that you do and and your team and um also for keeping this network secure. I mean, I feel like, you know, we're a little municipality, but I, I really feel like you've gone to great lengths for. In terms of our security and um so that we can continue to do what we do every day. So I just thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Um, the only, the only thing I want to toot my horn on and we can kind of toot Berkeley's horn on. Is uh the security conference that I went to back in the fall. Um, we have a new antivirus that we rolled out that is more artificial intelligence-based. Uh, it looks at the behavior of the software more than the actual um virus itself. Um, and we are the second government municipality in the state that is actually using it. So I know many others are looking at it. I've had a couple of inquiries from some of the townships in Wayne County. That uh wanted to see how we were doing with it, uh, cause we're similar size. Um, it um thankfully as far as between our firewall and antivirus and all the other security measures that we're doing. Um, no breaches, um, we certainly get probed every day, but um, everything has been uh holding strong. And uh, we'll be continuing to to increase that. I've been talking with the information security officer from Oakland County. And also the new security group from the state and um will definitely be increa- increasing uh security for the network.
Wow. All right. Well, thank you again, uh, Stan. Appears that I don't see any additional comments. Um, and as we steam uh forth towards hour number three, we now move to the Downtown Developments Authority. And Jennifer is with us and now we have again the the updated DDA uh budget. We want to make sure we're we're all looking at. Everybody good? Yes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll note some changes as we go through it.
Okay. Okay.
All right, uh, Mr. Mayor, as you've noted, uh, DDA Director Jennifer Finney is here. Uh, she came on part of the way through this process, uh, from, made the jump from board member to executive director. Uh, and so I'm going to be taking a portion of this and tag teaming with Jennifer on uh going through this portion. Uh, page one eighty-two will take you to the first of the line item pages. Um, I'd like to take you to the revenue portions. Uh, again, same caveat we've had throughout this process. There's a a lot of unknowns with the DDA's revenue at this point, especially as it. Uh, it one hundred percent comes from commercial property. And there's just a, we just don't know what the future there looks like, so we gave it our best guess. A lot of this work, um, and these projections come from Oakland County Equalization, who does a ton of our DDA projections for us. Uh, and utilizes their expertise. But um, please certainly be be ready for some changes over the course of the next budget year. Uh, generally speaking though, we think uh between the TIF and between the DDA. Uh, levy will will end up with about uh three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars in revenue for the, for the Downtown Development Authority. Most of that does come from the TIF. Uh, as you noticed, the itemized portion, the section that says property taxes is about thirty-eight thousand. That is the only portion that is actually attributed to a millage, so that's the only part that a uh property owner within the DDA would actually see on their tax bill. But it's anything different than uh what a resident would see, uh, generally speaking. And so again, the significant portion of our funding comes from the TIF itself, which is tax increment financing. Uh, essentially in nineteen ninety-three, the city set a baseline value for each of the properties within the district. The general fund is is reimbursed based on those values and anything above that portion is rerouted to the DDA. Along with a a capture on various other types of villages as well, including several county villages. So it actually brings in more revenue to the city than we normally would if the TIF didn't exist. Uh, so it's a great, it's a great tool for the city. Uh, now, uh, here's how we hope to make use of those uh, those revenues. The page one eighty-four takes you to DDA administration. That's where we'll capture not only uh Jennifer's salary as our um full-time DDA director. But also we'll have some professional developments. And you'll see where um, there's some upticks from years previous, but much with the same of the rest of the professional developments. There will be a a strict uh viewing of the agendas to make sure that it is fruitful for us uh to send somebody there. Uh, I want to note, uh, I'm sorry, I'm over there. There's a line item for office space rental. We are working to try to get the DDA director located here in City Hall. Um, but just in case, we have um, we have afforded for the continued use of Folio. Which is right there in the DDA districts. Um, again, with putting off some of the work on our, on our City Hall project. We, we may not be able to move Jennifer under the same roof as fast as we'd like. So we've uh essentially afforded for both options. as fast as we'd like. So we've essentially afforded for both options, but we'd only actually be spending one there. Those are really the notes on page one eighty-four. Flipping the page, page one eighty-six, it's the DDA Operations portion. We move through, we see again Membership and News. These are things that the entire DDA as an entity is a member of. We do have a consultant listed here for fifteen thousand. There were some recommendations based on the DDA's master plan to look at the zoning. Anybody who's looked at the zoning map for our commercial spaces knows that we have several, we have a lot more zoning districts throughout that small two-mile area than you would normally see. So the recommendation from the master plan was to redo the zoning and try to, try to focus in specifically on what they call context areas. And try to utilize our zoning to create very different experiences as you move through the downtown district there. And then most everything else is the same. We still utilize, we have line item for legal services, meetings and conferences. That actually might be a little bit redundant from professional development. Moving down to downtown Berkeley. Oh, I want to, I have a note here. The Downtown Berkeley Partnership is the nonprofit that was set up by the DDA. That's essentially, it's a partnership between the DDA as an entity, the city, as well as the school district. And so the membership there reflects participants from all three. That is going to be, we hope, another avenue towards raising revenues for the DDA. There's a lot of things that we don't have access to as a governmental or quasi-governmental entity that potentially a nonprofit would have access to, whether it's grants or going through some other type of loan program. So we're looking forward to making the most use of that. And I don't like the term because it's overly corporate, but it's essentially it's another tool in the toolbox, if you will. Flipping the page now to page one eighty-seven. You'll see our Special Events section. Jennifer, do you want to take events?
Yes. So again, with most of these budgets, we did, you know, craft this pre-COVID. So in the past, we've had in-person events. Obviously, right now, we're going to be tweaking that, but hopefully, you know, we'll be able to have events going forward. So we still want to keep part of this in the budget. So I know in previous budgets, we've kind of done a line item for each specific event. And going forward, I kind of moved this into one large bucket so we can be a little bit boosted with our event names and what that looks like going forward.
Yeah, largely, we are planning for a lot of the same events. Again, we hope to have a return to form for many of these. Some of these aren't necessarily the DDA's events, but things that we support financially, and probably so. Any questions on page one eighty-eight? Again, flipping the page now to one eighty-nine is Marketing and Advertising. And again, that's Jennifer's strongest suit.
Yes. So we do have a recommended same amount of marketing, advertising that we had previously. And this is not just for marketing and advertising for the DDA. It primarily goes to helping the businesses. A lot of the times, we'll create co-op programs. So in the past, we've done newspaper ads. So instead of our businesses having to pay, you know, the premium amount, the DDA will go in and be able to offer those advertising opportunities for a lesser amount, which greatly benefits all of our businesses.
Okay. Moving down to page one ninety in your book. This is an area where I want to call attention to. We'll continue the fire basket program, but right underneath that, you'll see Public Art and Placemaking is listed in your book as being at one fifteen, one hundred and fifteen thousand. The first item underneath that is a pocket park at Dorothea. That is something that has been discussed. The DDA and our Parks and Rec Department are both very much aligned in a goal of creating more downtown gathering spaces and setting more parks in the downtown area. But in context, it was not an expenditure that we looked to actually endeavor upon this year. So that's going to be a deferred project. That hundred thousand dollars would actually be moved to the, to next year. You'll see the same thing reflected in the Parks and Rec's proposed budgets tomorrow evening as well. So that should actually be removed. That Public Art and Placemaking then contains only Berkeley High parking project, parking lot project for, that would be contributing ten thousand to. And then also DDA art installation, a mural at five thousand. We're moving down the road with a mural with the DIA. And unfortunately, it was, had to be moved because of COVID. They really restricted the amount of projects they were going to do this year. But very exciting, we were talking about putting a large-scale mural at Robina on the side of the former theater location. So it was going to be a fantastic addition to our downtown program. We hope that the DIA will consider us at the top of their list next year. We've got, Mateo Pasalaco in particular did a fantastic job of, as the head of the Design Committee, working with, or the Public Art Committee as well, working with the DIA and working with the property owner there. And we were close to just being done with this and ready to start putting some paint on the wall. But again, things changed fairly abruptly there. And then the parking lot project with Berkeley High, as you recall, they purchased, I'm not sure what it used to be. It's been a number of different things over the years, but essentially it's the property next to the community garden. They're going to be expanding the parking lot, but they're also reserving some space for a nice little seating area, a common space in the downtown. So it's a nice new addition to our area south of Calpa, and the DDA is going to help make that vision a reality. Both of which, both that project, the mural project, and then next year's pocket park are all consistent with near-term goals that are outlined in the DDA's master plan. So it's great to see, great to have the ability to put some resources to that right away, both this year and now into next year. Following, moving down a little bit now to the facade grant incentive program. Let's see, that is something you'll see that twenty-five thousand is a lot for that year. That's a standard amount that we do each year. But if you look back over the history of that, we have not yet spent that amount. We advertise that. Several businesses have taken advantage of it in the past. We'd love to get to the point where we are spending that full amount, but it's just, we haven't gotten there yet. But improving the aesthetics throughout the district was another one of the goals that the DDA master plan emphasized. And so we don't see the need to move that backwards at this time again. But we are mostly expecting it to not come to that full amount.
And Natalie, any other questions?
Yeah, just want to clarify, is the facade grant, is that a matching program or just a percentage that the DDA covers?
So we do up to twenty-five hundred on that. It's not necessarily matching, but typically by the time they're coming to the DDA, they've spent probably far more than that on a facade upgrade. So it just helps make the project either a little bit nicer, provides a little bit of gap financing for it, or allows them to upgrade their materials in such a way to hopefully meet the design, either design standards that we see throughout the community or the written ones that we've been discussing for a while.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving now to page one ninety-two. I want to call your attention to streetscape improvements. That's one of the increases you'll see from years previous. What we want to do is, as the note says, update street furnishings. So Councilmember Baker has said for many years inaccurately that fade and rusts are seen to be the themes of much of our streetscaping. So we are allocating monies now to upgrade those. We can do that on a project-by-project basis, so we don't have to spend all of that amounts if our revenue picture doesn't pan out in the way that we hope. But we would, should be able to replace quite a few of the rusting, bent, otherwise damaged trashcans and/or benches along the DDA's footprint there. So it's, starting to see some immediate updates to the streetscaping. And then wayfinding, hopefully, we're in the next budget year, hopefully, we're into phase two of that. We've been going back and forward with a design company that we've used to get us up to this point. They're pretty slow right now with the shutdown. They're likewise working from home. But again, we're hoping to get some updated budget numbers from the potential fabricators and get out to bid for that before the end of this budget year so that we can continue it into the next budget year as well. And flipping the page now. So page one ninety-three, you'll see the totals on this. So you're actually looking at a total for this year of about three ninety-five, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, leaving a fund balance of about a hundred and ninety-one thousand this year. I'm sorry. At the end of the projected this budget year, we'll have about a hundred and ninety-one thousand projected. At the end of next budget year, we do intend on spending about forty-two thousand or so of those dollars, leaving our fund balance at one forty-eight, five seventy-six, which is about thirty, thirty-seven point six percent of operating. And then by the end of fiscal year 2021, if, again, if we spend everything we project right now, which we know that we'll adjust accordingly as needed, we'd be looking at just a shade under seventy thousand in fund balance, which would be about sixteen percent. So still staying in line with the city's general policy of about a fifteen percent fund balance. But we are getting near needing to make some adjustments. So there are two things to come unfold there, both the expenditures, and then we're hoping some of the projects that have moved through the Planning Commission, moved through the permitting process, come to fruition, and we can start to see some increases in the revenue for the DDA's capture. Hopefully, and that's our projection.
Questions for the city manager or our DDA Executive Director regarding the DDA budgets? Steve, sir?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. And thank you to, yeah, Bridget. Thank you, thanks to you both. And I see Mr. Moses was on the, on the call here as well, representing the DDA Board. So I want to appreciate and acknowledge his time with us tonight. Not so much questions, but just a couple of comments. And I think there is a question in here, actually. First, I'm again really thrilled to see the wayfinding in here as well as on the city side. That will more broadly address that, the question about our city's colors, you know, in fact, being fade and rust. So I'm really glad to see this program continue. Also, the, one of the initiatives that we had talked about and done some research on, and perhaps Matt could speak to the thinking going forward on this, is to review and revisit the notion of the crosswalks on Coolidge. Coming into the budget discussions, there was dialogue about how to bring about more advanced and more visible and more robust signage and lights and having little crossarms that go over with the little blinky things and all that stuff. We had a couple of different options, and we're working through some numbers on that. And then, of course, this COVID thing comes along. And so it's not listed in the current or upcoming cycles. I didn't see it in the capital improvement plan. So perhaps there could be just a moment of discussion about, you know, how do we plan to move forward with those, with those crosswalks? So Matt, any initial thinking that you could share on what direction we might be headed?
Certainly. We actually put together a process right now. We're going to be seeking out a transportation alternatives grant through SEMCOG for installing those crosswalks. We think we've got a pretty good chance based on the webinar and the process that they laid out for weighing those grant applications. And so if we able to, again, given it's proximity to the schools, particularly the Dorothea one or the library, given that we've made some other multimodal improvements to the Coolidge corridor, and given, you know, the incidents we had with the crosswalks when we still had a four-lane street running up and down Coolidge, all made for a strong application, and we hope to be able to get some outside funding to fund those installations.
So can you share an approximate timeframe for that? Is that something we could anticipate happening in the next fiscal year, even if there's no financial component to it?
That is the goal, is to get this to happen within the next financial year. We're going to be applying for this round of TAP, and we hope to be able to install construction season next year if we're successful there. There's a lot of things that we would be doing locally as well, education, signage, general awareness for drivers and pedestrians about the proper function and how to remain safe within a crosswalk too. So there's some things that we can do in the meantime to preview what's coming.
Excellent. One other comment on the notion of the fund balance for the DDA. As we know, the notion of a fund balance is to have reserve funds available in case of an emergency or rainy day fund, or as we see around us, you know, a global pandemic, you know, that kind of stuff. The DDA operates in a little bit of a different context, right? There's not much to really plan for in terms of if an emergency happens, right? If there's any structural issues or damage to the downtown assets such as the benches and the bike racks and things like that, those wouldn't necessarily break the bank, so to speak. So I think a good rule of thumb with this is to keep it closer to that fifteen percent because this means that the businesses that are contributing into, into funding this through the TIF and others, other mechanisms, they're seeing a more value for their dollar. So I'm pleased to see that we're heading in the direction of hovering, you know, fifteen to twenty percent because, you know, we don't need to plan for three months of contingency spend as we do at the city level. So I think having a more streamlined fund balance is appropriate for this, and I'm glad to see that we're headed in that direction.
Thank you, Your Honor. I too want to echo Councilmember Baker's comments about wayfinding. And I, you know, as Vice Chair of the DDA, I mean, I can think back to, I was on the Wayfinding Subcommittee and just all the work that we did with Corbin Design and coming up with signage and what it might look like. And so I'm really excited to see this actually coming to fruition. And I just, I want to thank Matt and Jennifer for presenting your budget. I also, as a Berkeley business owner, want to thank the DDA for doing all the things that you do to support our downtown district. Cooperative advertising, the special shopping nights, Merry Month. Art and About was my favorite thing. I hope we can bring that back at some time and continue those. But the things that the DDA brings to businesses are things that we couldn't individually do. And so there is power in that group and in those activities. And, you know, I could go on and on, but I won't. But just thank you.
Another hand up. Any other comments? Ross?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, a comment, but also just, well, two comments, I guess. In the streetscape improvement portion, as we talk about the trash receptacles, we'd just like to throw an idea out there as you look at replacing some of those. It could impact the number, I suppose, or how many we can actually do. But it'd be nice to be able to look at a trash slash recycling dual receptacle, if possible, as we look to, as we look to replace some of those. And yeah, just to echo some of the comments, you know, I certainly kind of think that, you know, in these uncertain times for businesses, that the pooling of resources in the DDA to use for, you know, like Bridget was talking about, you know, business advertising or plan adjustment, business plan adjustments or development retention, you know, small business counseling, whatever it is, is certainly going to seem like it's going to be a very important value to businesses within the district. So thank you.
Initial questions? Not seeing any more hands go up. Again, thank you, Matt and Jennifer, for presenting the budget. And as has been mentioned, the impact of COVID is going to be felt exceptionally hard. It has already been on our business community. It's incumbent on us as a city with a vibrant downtown area to make sure that we are looking at the ways that were mentioned by Bridget and by Ross to be able to support our businesses and to help them through until we're able to open back up and hopefully resume business as usual, or whatever that new business as usual looks like. or whatever that new business as usual looks like in the future. So thank you both and we're, we're going to move on. So we've got two items left. However, we are going to take a five minute recess. We're going to take a stretch break or a honey break if you need it. Five minutes, we will be back at 9:15. All right, it is 9:15. It looks like everybody's hopping back on. We'll just give it another minute, get everybody back on the video. Oh, look at that, Steve. Adorable. Don't chew on that budget book. All right. Where is Bridget? Am I missing her? Trying to take a head count here. Bridget? All right, there we go. Okay. We are now ready to move on to capital project funds. Matt, who's going to be running that show?
Mr. Mayor, I believe you'll be listening to the dulcet tones of Mr. Mark Pollack.
All right, Mark.
All right.
Turn up again.
All right, we're in the capital projects fund. If you turn to page 198, we gave a quick summary in the budget book of what those are. We're down to, we have the court building fund, which was reclassified years ago to a capital projects fund. They said it's kind of money available for some, a good chunk of that was used to tear down the ice arena. There's still some money sitting there. If we ever do some capital projects at City Hall, I believe it could be utilized for that as well. And then you have your sidewalk fund, which we mentioned earlier, has kind of been put on the shelf for now. But we, when we eventually get that going, we'll have a loan from the general fund to seed money. And when that program starts, it'll be reimbursed through special assessments of, of residents who have sidewalk slabs replaced. And then the latest one is the capital road, capital improvement fund for the Road Village. We have collected a year's worth of, of revenue for that and that is moving forward. I'm not sure where it's at status wise, Matt. If, if HRC has, has bid some of that and decided where the projects are going to be done. I'm a little behind on whether that's happened yet or not. But the plan originally was to bid that out in the winter and take advantage of low prices. And again, COVID's kind of thrown all that off, although construction's reopening. So I think that can probably happen sooner than later. But if you flip over to page 201, you've got the court building fund there. There's the investment earnings is really all that's anticipated there as far as revenue goes. We still have the money sitting in fund balance, 400 and some. In fact, let me scroll back there because I think in the budget summary for all funds, yeah, we're, we're estimating at the end of this year, we'll be around 403,000. And then all we'll have programmed for next year is the 7,500 or roughly that we'll earn in investment for that balance sitting in the bank account. You know, and again, that, that money can be utilized and, and programmed going forward in later years.
So Matt, just a quick question. So the $250,000 that they're talking about for City Hall renovations, that would come from that fund? I'm assuming?
That would be?
That's a source we hope to utilize.
Yes.
Okay.
And then if we flip over to 202, we've got a few bank charges, it looks like expense wise, so. And not a whole lot of activity anticipated there. And then the Road Village Project Fund, again sidewalk right now is just kind of sitting empty. There's not much to talk about there. But if you flipped over to 205 is the Road Village Project, again anticipating that we have money sitting there. We had a capital outlay set. If that work were to happen before the end of June, we would still have a little bit of a surplus moving forward. But again, I'm not sure, Matt, if, if the plan is to get that done before the end of the fiscal year or if it'll push into later in the summer and combine some money.
Council actually just approved the vendor for, for that project and that should span the, happen over the course of the summer, spanning both fiscal years.
Okay. And that was part of, part of the philosophy and the plan last year in the budget was to collect that money, even though right out of the gate, we had to roll it back to collect that money and have it sitting, ready to go when the time came. And then again, we'll, we'll be collecting about one point, a little under 1.2 million anticipated with the rollback rate. So we'll have that additional money for projects and, and that could carry forward likely to next fiscal year. And I'm guessing going forward, the best strategy is going to be bid these in the winter when you take advantage of, of the best prices and then do the work that following, that following year. So you'll kind of always have some money sitting available and ready to use, but it'll take advantage of pricing from year to year. Any questions on that? And then in the book, we have sidewalks, again, a summary of the budget on 209. And then again, until we start the program, there's really nothing to, to talk about. There'll be a, a loan for the money upfront to start and then do the program. And then I saw a couple of questions come through from council on the program itself. As far as payment options, we're, we're going to work with the residents when this does eventually start. Certainly, I mean, because again, it's, that sidewalk bill hits a lot of people at a bad time and they certainly, you know, will get an opportunity to extend payment options. So we'll work with them when the program does start. But I guess you got to start somewhere. So the hope is that even if that doesn't start this year, we can get going with it next year. But the program itself, again, I think you have to address it at some point. So I think that is it for capital projects. Any questions?
Questions for our finance director on capital projects? Not as, as much there. We, we saw the funds and, you know, where, where we are with those. Councilmember Henning?
Yeah, so our, on the sidewalks, our plan right now is we aren't going to be moving forward with it in the near term, but it is budgeted as if we could if we wanted to.
Yeah, absolutely. We've got, we kind of thought we'd have that seed money going forward. And again, I think if, if there's additional questions, Derek can address directly. He's been dealing with HRC as far as, you know, what the plan should be going forward. But, but you're right, we put it in the budget just in case we do move forward with it. We, we'll have that one year of seed money, which we kind of treat it as a loan from the general fund to actually pay for, for the engineering and the concrete. Each year we'll collect it and that following year or later that year we'll collect from the residents. And again, that, that money coming in will be slower than the outlay. But the, the idea is you, you kind of seed that money each year and then get the previous year's money back. So that'll be kind of the plan.
Yeah, right, right now, having in this budget here gives us the option of a, a late fall start or an early spring or early summer start.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions on capital project funds? Seeing none, we will move into our next item, Public Safety Retirement Fund.
All right, and that is page 244 in your book. And I sit on the trustee board with members of the Public Safety Department. We have Jim Smith, retiree. We have Mark Massonoy, who's appointed by the mayor and is extremely knowledgeable. He, he can sit in there with Plant Brand Financial Advisors, who handles all of our investment and advice and moves our money back and forth. In fact, we recently, because we had an imbalance due to the big drop off in the market, they had recommended to us that we move some money to rebalance. And Mark's very instrumental in informing us, not so smart board members, what we should do. And it's great to have that. So as a resident, you know, giving him his time, it's, it's great to have him provide that insight to the board. But, you know, we've made some changes as he did to MERS. We lowered our investment percentage expectation, which much like MERS, requires us to put in a little bigger contribution. And we were about 73% funded, I believe, last year. We had a great calendar year last year and then the last quarter was really good. And then the first quarter, we took a hit, as did everyone. Again, with, with COVID hitting and then the market sell off, we, we took a little bit of a hit in that first quarter. We have, we actually have a meeting scheduled for Monday where we'll get an update from Plant Brand Financial Advisors to let us know how much we bounced back and hopefully that rebalancing helped us a little bit. But if you look at 244, the scheduled payment for the investment part, the pension part is a million, 1,105, pretty close to where we were at for the current fiscal year. And then the investment earnings, again, that's, we take that on average. Some years you do worse, some years you, if you track back to the 18, 19 activity, a couple of columns over, we, we earned just over a million and that was because we had that horrible fourth quarter. But the anticipation, the average is a million 250 for the fiscal year. And we feel pretty confidently that we'll get there. And the $15,000 contributions comes from, there are some employees that do contribute to the public safety pension. So those are tracked separately. So you can see there from a revenue standpoint, we expect about 2,370,000. And if you put over to page 245, the expectation, Sue runs payroll. So the city runs its own pension payroll. Sue does that on a monthly basis to all the pensioners. And the, the 20,000 is the charge that we charge back to the system for her services, for my services and then really for any other additional internal services for the pension fund. And then all those other contractual services, we have investment strategy. And each company is managed through Plant Brand Financial Advisors. They're our, our main investment advisor. And then they all charge a percentage of our balance. So they run, if we do bad, they get less money, which is the best way to have it. If you're paying fixed fees and you don't perform, I, I think it's a lot, you're a lot more apt to look at, you know, why, why are we paying so much? But Plant Brand Financial Advisors, I think when I first started, Matt and I talked about, you know, making sure we're in line as far as the percentages, we pay them. And we absolutely are, what they charge us on a percentage basis is in line with what other investment advisors charge as far as the portfolio goes. So we are in line and the group, Mark Dixon and Brett Riordan are the two that we deal with the most, provide the services and they do a great job. They present to us on a quarterly basis and, and keep us up to date. And then like I say, we have, we have members, we have Mark Robinson is also on the trustee board as an active member and then Kent Harriman is the chairperson. And I guess we, we all have just enough knowledge to be dangerous, but we count on Mark. Mark, Mark, there's a lot of Marks, it's very confusing at, at trust. Uh, Mark, Mark, there's a lot of Marks, so it's very confusing at, at trustee meetings because there's four Marks at times. So, um, I think we generally will just go by last name, uh, or Mark Robinson is Mark with a C. But, uh, um, the anticipation is we'll have a surplus of about four hundred and fourteen thousand in the fund, uh, which would put us up just under twenty million in the pension fund, uh, which, uh, I believe Gabriel Roder anticipated that would put us close to, uh, seventy-five percent funded. And, uh, and I had mentioned earlier, when we collect the tax from residents, we also pay the retiree health, which we're allowed to do through Public Act three forty-five. And that's offset in the general fund, so it, it's not part of the pension here. But, uh, if we have extra money, uh, we talked about this, we could, uh, put that into the pension as well, so it would help fund it even further. Um, and just like anything else, the goal is to get it to a hundred percent, which, uh, last estimate from Gabriel Roder was we would be there in about thirteen years. So, um, you know, keep our annual contributions at that funding level of around one point one to one point two. And then if we have extra money, because we save money from the healthcare, and we put that into the pension. So, uh, our hope is to be fully funded, uh, in less than fifteen years.
Any questions on the Public Safety Retirement Fund? Pretty straightforward. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Keeping us updated and keeping us abreast of what happens, uh, with not only the fund, but also the advising that we're getting, rebalancing during this time is obviously something I'm glad to hear, uh, that was done, um, a few months ago, hopefully, or at least six weeks ago. And we'll see what happens, uh, we'll see what happens moving forward. Any additional questions from anybody? All right, well, we have reached the conclusion of night one of our budget hearings. Normally on the Tuesday night of budget hearings, I would be coercing everybody into playing softball the following night. Um, unfortunately, that is not going to be a reality this year, so one of the few athletic endeavors that I'm still able to participate in, we'll have to, uh, forego this year. But the good news is we're still champions, and we still get that trophy, and it's not going anywhere. Uh, hopefully next year, we will be able to, to resume our, our friendly rivalry and, and win it again and, uh, keep it at City Hall. Um, there are typically no communication adjourned for the evening. All right, well, thank you all. Uh, thank you to our directors tonight, and our directors that we will have as well tomorrow. Incredibly difficult time, um, to go through a budgeting process. They started in January, February, everything was looking like it was moving on schedule, and then significant changes came, and, and a lot of reductions had to happen in our budgets, and we'll see that again, uh, tomorrow. So I thank everybody for their diligence and their commitments to being fiscally responsible. As I've mentioned in the past, this is the most important thing that we do as, as council members, is manage the resources of the city, and we, we certainly, uh, take the time and care that is necessary to go through our budget. Uh, we will come back tomorrow, uh, same time, same place, and wherever you are, your home, and we will attack the second half of the budget hearings. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin, with support from Councilmember Baker. If everybody can just turn their microphones on, we'll do this the easy way for Ms. Mitchell. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried, our budget hearing is adjourned.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Stay safe.